Where is everybody?
Did you want to have a meeting? Is everybody sure? We could make a new policy.
All right, we're getting close here.
Close, close, close. Okay.
Good evening, everyone. It is 5:00 PM. And so I would like to welcome everyone and call to order our regular meeting number 2024-23. So if, we'll go ahead and start, Julie, with the roll call.
Gail Gary.
Here.
Joella West.
Here.
Michael Pacino.
Here.
Amy Dixon.
Here.
Dakota McGinley.
Here.
Steve Monteen.
Here.
And Brian Swintek.
He's absent today.
Oh, thank you.
Okay, with that, let's go ahead and stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance. There's a flag behind me and one on the back wall.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as one.
Okay, well, again, I just want to welcome everyone. And tonight, we have both a work session as well as a regular meeting. And so we are going to start out with our work session. And again, just to remind everybody, council will give direction to staff at work sessions for presentation of action items. At future regular council meetings, no motions will be considered. We will be taking public comment. We have also invited certain community members who may be available for questions. And for the format, we will hear the staff presentation, will allow council members to ask questions of staff or to direct questions to our invited community partner experts. And then we will open it up to public comment. And we again ask that public comment be limited to three minutes. And once you're recognized, each ask that each commenter state their name and their address for the record before you begin your remarks. And you can also submit public comment via email, or you can submit comments through the city's website at steamboatsprings.net or to citycouncil@steamboatsprings.net. So again, with that, I will hand it over to Winnie Delaquadre, Special Projects and IGS Manager for our first agenda item.
Welcome, Council. Super excited to present the results of our community survey to you. The survey was done in order to get information on city services and to be able to compare those to benchmark communities as well as to what we have received in the past in terms of scores from our community, as well as to get statistically significant data on areas that are part of Council Planning Commission and Parks and Recreation Commission's current areas of focus. Our survey was put together by an oversight committee that included city council members Gail Gary and Brian Swintek, Parks and Rec Commission Member Kelly Bastone, Planning Commission Member Brian Adams, and then Sarah Leonard from the Chamber Resort Association, as well as myself, and then Brad Calvert from the Planning Department. So without further ado, I'm going to turn this over to Polco, which is the company that we have utilized for our surveys starting in 2015. I'd also like to note for the members of the public that are online that we have not posted our report for the community survey because the report does not currently meet our accessibility standards that are now required by state law. However, you can email me and I would be happy to email you a copy of the report. If you need any accessibility measures, please contact me and I would be happy to make sure that this report is available to you in whatever format you need. So just wanted to put that out there for the record. So without further ado, I want to turn it over to Erin Caldwell with Polco, who will go over the results of the survey.
Good evening. I just want to do a little check. Can you hear me okay?
A little bit louder, I think, please.
Okay, I'll be a little louder. And can you see the screen I'm sharing with the slide deck?
Yes, we can.
Okay, very good. I can't see it on Zoom, so I just wanted to make sure. So again, I am pleased to be here to present the results of your community survey. But before we begin, on behalf of myself and my Polco coworkers, I did want to thank Winnie, who was our primary contact during the survey development and implementation process. And as always, she provided thoughtful feedback throughout the project. And then I also wanted to mention that I was actually not the project manager for this survey this time, but I'm here representing those who did work on the project. We kind of ended up with a perfect storm of presentations all on this date. And so I got pulled in to do this presentation for you. So I do want to also acknowledge my colleagues, Kim Dane and Nicholas Solari, who really did the work for your project.
Erin, actually, I'm going to stop you real quick. Can we, I don't know, Alex, can you show Erin up on the big screen so that we can see her along with the slides? Go ahead, Erin. We'll see if we can get it adjusted. Thank you. Oh, there you are.
Oh, great. So I'm going to start now talking about the survey methods and then I'll get into the results. Steamboat Springs first conducted a community survey in 1999, as Winnie mentioned. And this survey represents your eighth implementation. The questionnaire in 2024 contained many questions similar to those asked on previous surveys, so the trend lines could be examined. But new topics and questions relevant for now were also included on the survey. And we hope that you and staff will find this survey information useful for performance measurement and to guide the decisions you make to help Steamboat Springs be an excellent place to live, work, and play. I'm only going to briefly describe the survey methods that we use, but I am happy to answer questions if you want more detail. Data collection for the survey was conducted in the spring with 2,000 households from the registered voter list randomly selected to receive invitations to participate in the survey. We obtained a total of 579 responses for a 31% response rate. We know that there's always some individuals who are more likely to respond to a survey than others. So we statistically weight the survey responses to reflect the community, or in this case, the voter demographics. For example, we know that younger people are less likely to respond than our older people. So what we do is we give more weight to younger respondents and less weight to older respondents. So that we get that right balance makes the results more representative and is a survey research best practice. The 2024 survey materials also included instructions in Spanish for completing the survey online in Spanish. The report does contain a lot of information. In addition to the trend lines I mentioned earlier, there are comparisons by demographic and geographic subgroups, as well as comparisons to benchmarks. National Research Center, and now we're Polco, we merged with them several years ago, was the first organization to conceive of the idea to create benchmarks of public opinion. This allows jurisdictions to compare ratings of services to ratings of similar services from other communities. We find that services like library and fire tend to get higher ratings, while street repair tends to get lower ratings in almost every community. And so it makes more sense to compare street repair ratings in your community to that from other communities rather than kind of pitting the street services people against the fire services people. For Steamboat Springs, we provided comparisons to two different subsets of communities in our database. The first subset was communities with populations less than 30,000, so similar size to Steamboat Springs. And then we had an even smaller subset of resort communities with populations under 30,000. So I'm now going to start providing you, you know, information about the survey responses. As I said, we did ask a lot of questions. There were six pages of questions. So I want to reassure you that while I am going to present a lot of data this evening, I'm not going to recite every survey statistic. There's a lot of information in that report. I'm going to start by providing an overview of the benchmark comparisons. There were 69 survey items for which we could look at comparisons from other communities. Of these 69 items, 17 received ratings that were higher than the benchmarks or those average ratings. Seven were actually much higher. Forty-two received similar ratings and 10 received lower ratings. Now, there may be some of you that are familiar with past iterations of the survey. And you may have noticed that there are many fewer items in that, you know, higher than the benchmark comparison category compared to 2022 and other previous years. So last time the survey was conducted, there were actually about twice as many, about 35 items in that category. So that's kind of one of the stories that we did want to tell as well. But nevertheless, your ratings were overall fairly positive. The couple items, as an example of those that got, you know, the much higher ratings were ease of travel by public transportation and the quality of bus or transit services. And then some examples of those lower ratings were availability of public parking, availability of affordable quality housing, availability of affordable quality childcare preschool, and the cost of living. And there is a slide here. I'm not going to read all of these. I gave you already a few examples. But this is all of the items that were higher or lower than that benchmark comparison of communities of a similar size. Next, I'm going to look at comparisons to that even smaller subset of communities as resort communities with a population under 30,000. And you can see that here we had 10 items that received higher ratings, 50 similar, and nine items that received lower ratings compared to that benchmark comparison. Again, a couple examples of ratings that were higher was overall feeling of safety and snow removal. And a few of the items receiving lower ratings included the overall economic health of the community and the openness or transparency of city government. And once again, here are all of those items that were higher or lower. I will leave you to look at those in more detail later. Here we show how item ratings compared to the results from 2022. So now we're looking at your own results over time. That's really one of the best benchmarks. And here we can see that over half of the items received similar ratings, but for a great many items, 34 ratings were lower in 2024. There were two items that had more positive ratings. These included short-term rental enforcement and a vibrant mountain-based commercial area. Few of the items that had some of the bigger declines were street repair, ironically. The job the city does matching expenditures to community priorities. Overall confidence in the Steamboat Springs City Council and Steamboat Springs as a place to retire. Again, the full list is shown here, and some of these I'll also talk about in the presentation. Moving now into the survey key findings, I do want to point out a few items or, you know, areas that stood out to us as survey researchers. Like I said, there's a lot of more data in the report, but we're going to kind of focus on some of those areas we found to be most noteworthy within the survey results. First, most residents consider Steamboat Springs a desirable place to live, raise children, and retire. About eight in 10 residents gave excellent or good ratings to the overall quality of life in Steamboat Springs. And while this rating was lower than that seen in past years, it was similar to ratings given in other communities across the country with, you know, the smaller population and also those resort communities. About nine in 10 respondents praised Steamboat Springs as a place to live, while about eight in 10 gave excellent or good ratings to Steamboat Springs as a place to raise children. Approximately six in 10 were pleased with the community as a place to work or as a place to retire. Those participating in the survey were asked to rate a number of characteristics of the community, both in terms of the quality of these items and in terms of the importance of these items. We plotted each of these items on a quality importance matrix. And so importance was on the vertical axis up and down and quality on the horizontal axis. So items of greater importance are at the top of the chart. And that's actually what I'm showing here. I'm just showing half the chart because if we did the whole chart, you wouldn't be able to read it at all. It's still, I know, somewhat hard to read. So we often tend to counsel local governments that you might want to focus on what we call it, like that critical focus quadrant, those that are items that are of higher importance relative to the other items and also of lower quality compared to other items. So here you can see like those critical focus areas would be economic health and sense of community. Again, these are looking at those sort of community characteristics. Again, since we're looking at the top half, these are the higher importance items. And you can see natural environment, safety, health and wellness, and wildlife habitat were items that were of higher importance and also of higher quality. This slide shows now the lower portion of that quality importance matrix. So you can kind of see wildlife habitat there. It was kind of right on the line. So these are items on which residents placed lower importance relative to those items I showed on the previous slide. And so of these, the items of higher quality included the image of reputation of the community, parks and recreation, and wildlife habitat right there on the line. Items receiving lower quality ratings were the built environment, education and enrichment, and overall ease of travel. In 2024, we asked every participants to look at a list of 14 factors likely to impact quality of life. And they were asked to select three, which they felt were of the greatest importance to their personal quality of life in Steamboat Springs. And this is the percent who chose each of these items as one of those three factors. And so as you might expect, about half or more residents considered access to outdoor activities, the quality of the natural environment, and the natural and scenic environments to be of one of those top three factors. Over half also felt that the sense of place and the small town character of Steamboat Springs was an essential factor to their quality of life. Then we kind of get down to those that were chosen less frequently. I'm not going to go over every single one, but one that I found interesting, you can see that ability to get around without a motor vehicle was chosen as an important factor for quality of life by 17% of respondents. And then if you look a little further down, that's actually more than chose the convenience of driving my own private vehicle. That was kind of down here, second from the bottom. And also, this ability to get around without a motor vehicle was even considered more important by more residents than even the ease of travel in and out of Steamboat Springs. Our second key finding was that community affordability and housing are of concern to residents. I kind of already mentioned that those were some of those items that got the lowest or that were lower than benchmark comparisons. Here are the actual ratings. And so you can see that more than half of residents rated the cost of living and the affordability of housing, healthcare, and childcare as only fair or poor. And in fact, 70% or more gave ratings of poor to the availability of affordable childcare preschool, the cost of living, and the availability of affordable quality housing. And again, these ratings were lower compared to our benchmark comparisons. Knowing that the availability of quality affordable housing is a major concern, residents support for or opposition to various strategies to address housing were included on the survey in 2024. All of the strategies presented to residents were at least somewhat supported by seven in 10 residents. You could see that the ratings are fairly similar for all five of these. Three of these five strategies were strongly supported by more than four in 10 residents. And these are the requiring new multifamily building to contribute to affordable housing, requiring new commercial building to contribute to affordable housing, and encouraging higher density or smaller units near where people work. Sorry. Emergency rental assistance and greater involvement of the city in planning for investing in and monitoring housing needs were strongly supported by about three in 10 residents. The 2024 survey also assessed residents' level of support for different alternatives on how to spend the short-term rental tax. All alternatives were at least somewhat supported by more than 60% of residents. But the greatest support was shown for providing housing for essential employees and for, well, yeah, for essential employees. And you can see here that even, you know, almost two-thirds like strongly supported this option. Then we had about 85% of respondents who felt that was, who would at least somewhat support partnerships with employers to construct affordable employee housing or providing incentives for the construction of ADUs for long-term rental. We also had, again, eight in 10 respondents and more than four in 10 strongly supporting, eight in 10 at least somewhat supporting Highway 40 improvements in West Steamboat to help support future affordable housing and providing incentives to convert short-term rentals to long-term rentals. About three-quarters of residents at least somewhat supported employee housing for City of Steamboat Springs employees and rebates on development fees for affordable housing and new development. And then you can see these others again were supported by still, you know, almost two-thirds of respondents. So really, all of these options, people are in favor of, but those at the top have the strongest support. When forced to choose only two of the five housing strategies, those that are on the left, the most popular options selected were encouraging higher density or smaller units, requiring multifamily, and requiring commercial building to contribute to affordable housing. So what we were trying to do with this question was force people to not give, say, all of them are important or that they would support, but which ones were most important? So those were the three that residents were most likely to select. They could also then choose up to three short-term rental spending priorities. And here we can see those top ones were housing for essential employees, incentives for converting short-term rentals to long-term rentals, and the Highway 40 improvements to support future affordable housing in West Steamboat Springs. So these can kind of help you see like, since we, right, it's human nature to want to have everything when we force them to choose a few. Here's what kind of was rising to the top. Our third key finding is that ratings for government performance generally remained positive, although declines were observed since we had seen sort of a COVID-19 bump in about 2020. So it returned ratings of most items to sort of the previous baseline ratings. There were a couple exceptions with greater declines, however, and I will show one of those in this next slide. So ratings of the overall quality of services provided by the city started in 2015 with positive ratings from 84% of respondents. And that jumped to 90% in 2020. And you probably have heard this before, but there was something that happened with the surveys conducted during the pandemic. People, I think, that sense of emergency kind of gave people a greater appreciation for their local government really stepping up to help with things. And it kind of, there was a halo effect. They felt much more positively about local government. But now you can see in Steamboat Springs that in 2022, the ratings declined to 81%, kind of about the same as what we saw before the pandemic. But here in 2024, we see a rather precipitous decline to only 68%, giving a positive rating. That's still, you know, a strong majority of residents, but something maybe to be explored. Looking at ratings of customer service down here at the bottom part of the slide, again, ratings of customer service were higher in 2020 and 2022 than we saw previously, but in 2024 kind of returned to that baseline level. Okay, this is a very busy slide. Here we're showing the ratings of 10 aspects of city government performance. And they're a little hard to differentiate on this graph. But basically, what we wanted to show here was that these ratings also showed that sort of, you know, most, almost all of them, this like bump that we saw in 2020 and then kind of returning to baseline. And we didn't really see any that fell like so far below what it had been before the pandemic. I'll point out a few. In 2024, about six in 10 residents indicated they had confidence in city staff and about half felt positively about the value of services for sales taxes paid. And those are those two lines. You can see at the top, they're a little easy to see the tan and then that dark one at the very top. Then we have only about a third of residents between 34% and 41% giving positive ratings to this big cluster in the middle. And that includes treating all residents fairly, opportunities to participate in City of Steamboat Springs decision-making, openness and transparency of city government, overall direction the city is taking, and the willingness of local government to listen and be influenced when residents participate. Down then these lines at the very bottom, about three in 10 residents gave ratings of excellent or good to the job the city does matching expenditures to community priorities. And also about three in 10 gave positive ratings to their overall confidence in the Steamboat Springs City Council. And that's this very bottom line, that's kind of this darker pink that you can see. And again, ratings were actually lower back in the early 2000s. Rose got that bump in the pandemic, and now we're kind of returning to where we were before the pandemic. We asked about a number of city services and again created the same quality importance matrix. So residents could rate the quality of city services and they could rate the importance. So the services that are in the critical focus area of higher importance and lower quality, and again, I've divided this chart into two parts. So these are all the higher importance one. The ones on the left are this critical focus areas. And those would include management of the health of the Yamp River, management of recreation activities on the Yamp River, street repair, and land use planning and zoning. Services rated as being of higher importance and higher quality are shown on the right, and they included drinking water, snow removal, EMS, fire, sewer, transit, preservation of natural areas, police, storm drainage, parks, and transit. And then these are the services that were rated as being of relatively lower importance. We have a lot to cover, so I'm not going to go over each of those individually. Survey participants were asked to check what factors might result in their riding the bus more often than they currently do. And I think I had mentioned previously that ease of travel by public transportation and bus and transit services did receive high ratings actually in Steamboat Springs. But when we asked that, like, the most important, or the top thing they said was, well, if it was faster to take the bus than to drive, if the bus stop was near my home or my destination, that kind of makes sense. One thing I thought was interesting that people did say, you know, it was kind of a top, near the top, was if parking was inconvenient at my destination, you might be more likely to take the bus. And then a little further down, you can also see one about if I had to pay for parking at my destination, I might be more likely to take the bus. Well, so our fourth key finding, we observed that Steamboat Springs residents highly value the natural environment and the outdoor recreational opportunities available to them. And I realize I'm kind of going over. Winnie, do you want me to go ahead and skip this section and go to the last part? Or, I don't know.
Just continue.
Go ahead, continue. Okay, so I'm going to go a little more than 20 minutes. It's looking like, sorry about that. I got excited and covered a lot. So we observed that Steamboat Springs residents highly value the natural environment and the outdoor recreational opportunities available to them. It was noted that 93% rated the importance of the overall natural environment as essential or very important. But then they also gave very high ratings, like 97% said the natural environment in Steamboat Springs was excellent or good. Recreational opportunities and amenities and the paths of walking trails were given positive ratings by more than eight in 10 residents. We asked a question about how important residents felt various activities and facilities were at Halson Hill. And so these are kind of sorted by the percent who said they were essential or very important. And you can see that, again, seven in 10 or more rated all of them as essential or very important. But then what's interesting to look at also is the percent who said they had done or participated in each of these activities or used these facilities. And a couple that I thought were interesting to point out, you can see the Halson Hill Nordic area, 88% said that was essential or very important, but only 34% said they had actually used it. So even though it was used by many fewer residents than say, like the Emerald Mountain in summer or Halson Ski and Snowboard Area, nevertheless, they still felt that was an important amenity for the community. We asked how, on average, how frequently residents visited Steamboat Springs parks. And over 85% said they visit a park at least monthly, and about six in 10 did so at least weekly. Just over half of respondents said they drive to get to the park they visit most frequently, indicating that about 45% don't drive to get to the park they use the most. About four in 10 said they walk at least some of the time. And again, about four in 10 said they bike at least some of the time. Transit isn't used very often to get to a park. When asked what activities they use city parks for, walking was kind of the number one, either without a dog or with a dog. Those were the top two, relaxing, exercising. Four in 10 said they use a park for special events. About two in 10 said they use it for formal sports team activities. And less than one in 10 said they don't use parks at all. We asked about e-bikes. I'm not going to go over all of these. I'm just going to say about three in 10 residents reported they do own an e-bike. And an additional one in 10 said they were planning to purchase one. And then among those households with an e-bike, most rode the e-bike at least weekly. When asked how they would characterize recreation on the Yamp River, about two-thirds said it was just right, and the remainder said maybe there was too much. About two thirds said it was just right and the remainder said maybe there was too much and almost nobody said there wasn't enough. And when asked about what issues were of most concern to them regarding the Yampa River. Low water levels and trash in or near the river and overcrowding were those most common responses. But you know, there were also those that were concerned about increased water temperature, commercial tubing and construction near the river. Residents were also asked about what options they felt should be in a new visitor communications plan to educate tourists. On how to be good stewards in the community. And the thing they felt most important was to champion responsible use of outdoor recreation amenities. Followed by educating, education on protecting and enjoying wildlife. And then finally, these are kind of important for you in terms of decision making. We asked about residents about their support for redevelopment or development to accommodate growth. And for their support for regulatory actions to protect the community. When asked whether they supported or opposed development or redevelopment in various areas in Steamboat Springs. There was only one area where a greater proportion of residents opposed development than supported it. And this is one you can see on the bottom, that was in the north and east of Steamboat Springs, like at the Strawberry Park area. Six and ten residents opposed development there while four and ten, which is kind of what I'm showing here, would support it. However, all these others, two thirds or more said they would at least somewhat support development in these areas. With the strongest support being for redevelopment of nonhistoric properties within city limits or infill of vacant properties within city limits. Eight and ten said they would at least somewhat support. And, you know, half said they would strongly support infill of vacant properties. Eight and ten said they would support development along in West Steamboat or north and west of Steamboat Springs by the airport. And then two thirds in West Steamboat or south of Steamboat Springs. And then finally, residents were asked about their level of support for several actions aimed to protect the city and its resources. And again, you can see down here at the bottom, there was really only a couple where there was, you know, really strong opposition. And that was requiring river users to register their boat or. You know, what they were going to use on the river. Only four and ten supported that, six and ten opposed it. Or on this one about requiring all river users to take an education course before recreating on the river, half supported it, but about half opposed it. There was strong support for strengthening standards to protect wetlands or buffer areas along the streams and river and strengthen protections for wetlands. With nine and ten at least somewhat supporting that and more than half strongly supporting. Requiring conservation, water conservation for single family homes in landscape standards. And creating incentives for preservation of buildings according to our history, kind of to disparate things. But both of these had support from eight and ten residents. Kind of also again related to this historic preservation. Eight and ten supported establishing a ninety day waiting period for demolition permits for historic buildings. I'm sorry, that was about two thirds, excuse me, and about two thirds were supportive of developing rules for altering and constructing additions to historic buildings. About six and ten were supportive of creating historic districts if a majority of property owners supported that within the district. Getting back to sort of the river and wetland health, six and ten would support implementing a stormwater fee to support activities to improve river health. And almost six and ten said that they would support limiting the daily number of people recreating on the river. And then just over half, but it's kind of close within that margin of error, said they would support setting an upper limit on single family house sizes. With again, like forty five percent saying they would oppose that. So the community is kind of split on that. So I'm sorry, I did go a little long, but I am finished now. If you have questions for me, I'm happy to take them, or I think this is also a time for your discussion.
All right. Thank you, Erin. That is a lot of information to absorb. But thank you for walking us through it and making it understandable. So with that, I'll open it up for council questions.
Okay.
I, I, I will start with a question. As we look at the, at the differences between this community survey and the ones that came before. My first thought is. As far as the respondents are concerned, was there any way to determine how many of them moved here since twenty twenty?
I believe so, but I did not memorize your survey, so let me take a quick look. Sorry, since I wasn't involved in the development of it, I looked at it. Yes.
Sorry, that was a surprise question.
No, no worries. I, I have the report up in case something like this came up. So yes, we did ask a question about how many years you have lived in Steamboat Springs. And I can almost guarantee, but again, I have to take a quick look. We have tables of cross tabulations. And I can almost guarantee that length of tenure in the community would be one of those questions that's cross tabbed. So that you can see those results.
It would be great if you could just share that later, the email, whatever would be fine, at least for me.
And Winnie, I assume you're writing that down because I can't see who asked.
You know, Winnie had sent us out the, the entire survey results.
Okay.
And so I think it's in the, it's in the back of the document. Looking for it now.
Okay, it, it is a long document, partially because we have all those tables in the back of. You know, benchmark comparisons and the cross tabs.
It looks like it's. That appendix A.
Let's see, I'm gonna go to the. But appendix A just has like tables of the. Frequencies of people in each of the different like. Demographic subgroups. It is appendix C that has comparisons of select survey results by responding subgroups. That would be those cross tabs and that's page eighty one to two twenty nine. So that's a big chunk of the report. So you can dive in. If you're interested in subgroups. Again, I, it would have been too much if I had started to go into all of those differences in this presentation.
So is your, you'd like to know, would you like the results separated out in terms of. Each question or just want to know how many people?
It, it's just the simplest version of that question.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Do we know how many of the respondents moved here since twenty twenty?
Yes.
Very good. Yes, we, well, twenty twenty, we asked it as in how many years have you lived in Steamboat Springs?
Yeah, that would work.
So it's if less than two years was seven percent and two to five years was eighteen percent. So that would be like twenty five percent have lived here five years or less. That's about the pandemic, right?
Probably pretty consistent.
And, and I do want to note, I did say that at the front, but I'll, I'll just say it again. This survey was only sent to people who are registered to vote, so they're going to be less transient, obviously, than. The community as a whole.
Yeah, so it was, it's, it is in the back in that appendix A, less than two years was thirty seven. Two to five years were a hundred and one. Six to ten years, ninety four, eleven to twenty years, ninety four, more than twenty years, two hundred and forty seven of the respondents. So.
And the proportions are in there too, so you don't have to do the math.
Other.
Twenty five percent five years or less.
No, I would just say this is, as, as I was part of the two thousand seventeen survey. And so it's nice to see the consistent and how we have these benchmarks and work through it. So it's really great to, for me to look at it and, and. See where the community feels we are. I think there's something we're going to be banking on for the next few years. And going back and extrapolating kind of where our citizens want. But I, I'm so glad that we invested the money in this survey and I, and I really appreciate. To have this analysis done and, and you've done a fantastic job coalescing this information for today's presentation. So thank you. But I, I really don't have a ton of screaming observations. It's more just to go. Talk about what's out and know that we have some great data. I know through conversation, I've spoke with the Steamboat Sarah at the Chamber. There was a couple of key questions that they have that they're going to tap into. And so I think we're getting better at really asking the right questions and having the right analysis. So looking forward to digging a lot deeper myself.
Other, other questions, comments?
I have a question on, maybe it's methodology more than anything. But when you compare to other resort community benchmarks here, are you always comparing the same year's data? Or are you comparing different, in other words, if we're comparing our twenty twenty four data. Are we comparing that to twenty twenty four data for the other benchmark communities?
That is a really good question and the answer is not exactly. In order to have enough, you know, benchmark comparisons. We use the most recent survey that was conducted by those communities and it has to have been conducted within the last five years. So most will be more recent, but because of that five year span, there may be some in that comparison who may have done their survey. You know, twenty twenty even, so.
Okay, so is there a way to know how many of the benchmarks are twenty twenty four benchmark surveys? And how many are twenty twenty three?
There is a way to know that.
You don't need to do it right this second. But I, I would be interested in, in understanding that. Another question I have is when you talk about somewhat versus strongly, somewhat support, can you give me? What that would translate to on a scale of like one to ten, somewhat support? If five was neutral, what would be somewhat support?
That's a great question. We actually, because. Others now at NRC and Polco have followed my lead on this. There is some debate in the survey research community about allowing a neutral midpoint. But when it's a support or oppose question, like if you're going to the ballot, you either say yes or no, you know, you, so I don't like neutral midpoints. So this question was asked with four points, strongly support, somewhat support, somewhat oppose, strongly oppose. So if they didn't say, if they had an opinion, if they answered the question. If they didn't say strongly or somewhat support, then they said they somewhat or strongly opposed it. I, I don't know if that exactly answers your question, but so.
No, no, it answers my question. Yeah, it does, it does. And my final just thought around the top three factors. That you show here, which to me are not surprising at all, but it's almost the eighty twenty rule with these top three factors. And how much stronger. Support they have than anything else. Wouldn't you agree with that? The top three factors determining quality of life, you know, the three highest are forty eight, fifty eight, sixty three. And nothing else is really anywhere close. Do you usually see that kind of? Of a pattern?
You know, yes, especially with a question like this, like, of course, every community asks this, this isn't one of those standard questions, right? And every community asks it slightly differently. And they may have their own, oh, and I'm using the wrong one. Excuse me, let me go to that one. Oh yeah, that, yeah, this is the one. So they may have other things like my family lives here, you know, in midwestern towns or different factors. But it does tend to follow the same pattern where there's like. Two or three things that are the reason most people, you know. Consider important for their quality of life and the rest less so. And I'm sorry for having a hard time hearing me. I just am getting a rainstorm with hail beating on my window, so I apologize.
That's okay. Thank you.
I'll just ask a quick question. Thank you. This is really helpful and informative information. When I look at the actual survey report and specifically the demographics. I wonder if there's a way. It doesn't seem like the respondents totally represent the demographics of our community. And how is that factored in with, look at the survey results or for future surveys, if you have any recommendations. That we're able to. Maybe represent the community more so.
That is a good question. And, and I will again say, we did wait the survey. Data, you know, I talked about that demographic waiting, but of course we use the vote. Pardon me, the voter profile as that. And it is very likely that in a community like Steamboat Springs and other resort communities. It's always a challenge to decide who should get the survey and how do we find them? Because so much of the housing or the residential addresses might be second homeowners, might be. Short term rentals, things like that. And so, you know, we want to target those who actually live in the community. And the voter list tends to be the easiest way to do that. But then we know there's certain characteristics about voters versus maybe the general population, right? And so I would say I think that this probably represents fairly, 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 that's a bad sense construction. That it barely represents the voters, but maybe not the community as a whole. And those are just some of the trade offs.
I would add that when we, we had. A probably a two month long discussion of which population to pick. When we did the original survey in two thousand seventeen. And one of the challenging things is that we actually can't use physical addresses per se. Because a good number of our physical addresses don't get postal service. And we can't really just use the PO boxes because the PO boxes are not differentiated. Between businesses, individuals and individuals who live within the city limits and outside of the city limits. And so as a result of those complications with how people get mail locally. We were left with really the only way to, to get to the population that we wanted, which were individuals, not businesses. That lived in Steamboat Springs. We had to go to the voter records, but not for lack of trying. Because we're super clear that by going to the voter records, we are not getting in many cases the transient population. And we are super clear that we are not getting our immigrant population as well. We did for the first time, I mean, we, we've done this survey in Spanish for multiple years. And for the first time, we had someone answer it in Spanish. I was so proud. And, and so know that. You have to take some of the data with a grain of salt because we are going to registered voters. We are not getting people who aren't registered. So when you start thinking about who that group might be. Those are the people we're not hearing from in this process.
That makes sense when you think.
Oh, and I would say we did last year in twenty twenty two. We did the community survey in the statistically significant fashion. And then we opened it up to the community just as an opt in survey. The results were different in the ways that you would expect it to be different, meaning people. Like the Winter Sports Club sent out an email saying, hey, everybody, go do the survey, et cetera. And so for those, you know, the, you could see a correlation between bumps in. How many people use certain things at Hallison Hill compared with, or how many people played soccer with, who put out the emails. Which showed the issue with the opt in. Interestingly, we partnered with Integrated Community on the opt in survey and still got nobody.
Thanks, Winnie.
All right, other questions?
I just have one other question and I assume the answer is no. You didn't ask an upfront question here of how, how you voted on brown ranch, did you?
I don't believe so. I think we would have included that.
Okay.
It was, yeah, it was, it was before.
Before last.
Right?
Yeah, this.
Yep.
Okay.
All right, so we do. Oh, yes. Thank you Dakota.
Yeah, absolutely. And I don't know if you have this information, but I'm wondering on the topic of. Oh, trying to get to the slide here. Uh, I think it was slide ten. Yeah, in, in comparison to previous year's survey details, slide ten. There's a lot of more negative ratings. And I'm specifically curious about the confidence in Steamboat Spring City Council, confidence in city staff. And just kind of the transparency and openness of government. I don't know if there was like specific questions. that can kind of illuminate where those ratings, you know, what they're really speaking to, or if it was more general and broad.
For those government performance ones, I think I showed that the all the bunched up lines that did this. And so, yeah, they declined because there was this bump. You know, this pandemic or feel good bump that happened. And and basically, all of those just kind of returned to base, what I'm calling baseline, like to what the ratings were, say, in 2015 and 2017. So they declined from the previous survey, like there was a bump, started to decline and kept declining back down to baseline. So when you look at just to 2022, yeah, there were declines. But when you look at the whole trend line, it's kind of like, oh, it went back to baseline. With that one exception, I mentioned about overall quality of city services.
Could you go back to that slide?
Yes, I'm trying to find. Okay, not that one. No, I. How do I can, can I do it again? Oh, yes, I can. There we go. This, are you talking about this slide or the one, the bar, the?
Well, the one that I think it might be slide 10, kind of lists out, yep, that one.
Oh, oh, this one. Well, okay.
Okay, well, thank you for the information. I agree with everything else my fellow council members have added, so thank you.
And I don't know, Winnie, maybe a question for you. I mean, is there is there a way to dig any? And would you recommend digging any deeper on any of this? Because I know we have the opportunity, right? You know, potentially do more, you know, additional surveys, right?
Yeah, so what I would say is I think that Steve's comment on the fact that our 2024 results are being compared with some of the surveys from the COVID bump could be part of the reason why our benchmark comparisons are different than they have been in the past. We can certainly look into that by looking at how do we compare to those communities that have surveyed in the last two years instead of the last five. And then I would note that in order to, from a timing perspective, have our community survey occur in a way that feeds into our new strategic planning process, we are proposing to do the survey again in 2025 so that we would then have our every other year survey in alignment with our strategic planning process. So at this point, I would recommend that rather than spending a ton of time trying to figure out why we went down so much, I would look at, you know, is this more just we're comparing ourselves to the COVID bump in other communities? And we can look at whether or not this stabilizes next year or if it keeps coming down. And if it keeps coming down, then the way that you would handle that is through community engagement and focus meetings where you can ask questions and listen. So a survey is a really good way to just get broad, big picture overview information. It is not a great way to say, why do you think that? If you want to ask the question, why do you think that? Then that is a smaller session where you listen, where you ask, why do you think that? And then you spend a lot of time listening. And certainly, staff have the ability to do that in the areas that are of extreme importance. So we would just need to know which areas are of extreme importance and then be able to build that into our community engagement process.
How much more community engagement is involved with the Steamboat Springs area community plan? Like, could we incorporate a little bit more of those listening sessions? Or we already have them set aside and we can focus on some of these areas?
I'm going to have ask Brad to come up to the podium. I know that he has been doing a lot of listening sessions, so I'll let him answer.
Good luck, Brad.
Hello, Brad Cowburn, the Planning Department, managing the community plan that Dakota mentioned. We're still doing engagement for sure. I would describe the engagement of the community plan sort of operating at that sort of vision and values level, maybe more so than on the service delivery level. I actually tend to agree 100% with what Winnie said. This is a track and monitor through the survey and dig in deeper with focus groups. Surveys are simply just a tool and make sure to use the tool in the right way. So yes, we will continue to have conversations in the community plan, but they may not hit the mark quite at, let's say, the sort of faith in government satisfaction with city services level like the survey does.
Good answer. That's what I was thinking too. It's more of a land use plan and getting into city services or confidence in government or transparency or the reasons why. It's really not going to go after those types of questions. The community outreach is always good. We might hear comments that shed some light on that, but it's going to be more anecdotal.
And I'll just add, I mean, this is recency bias, to use survey terms. I had a sort of a focus group today essentially, and they talked about the importance of, let's call it, city resident customer satisfaction is a benchmark that we track over time, in part because your constituencies have to have faith and trust in you to continue to advance the work that you're suggesting needs to happen through the community plan. So there is a there is a bit of an intersection here, but there also is some differences as well.
All right, thank you, Brad. Okay, any additional questions?
I think the one follow up I heard was from Steve, right? Is to see if we can get benchmarking and do the follow up question regarding when as we're benchmarking against the communities and which ones are truly 2024 to 2024 versus the COVID bump to 24. So if we can get that information as a follow up, I think that would be great. And then again, if you need it, you know, Winnie did send us all of the information. And so if you can't find it in your email, let us know and we'll send it. Because I think it's definitely worth spending some more time with in terms of, you know, the questions and how the questions were asked and what the answers, you know, are. So lots of good data there. So again, we really appreciate the work on this and thank you, Winnie, and for and all the staff that participated as you helped lead us through this process.
Thanks, Winnie. So no questions. Are we going to talk about it or should I just do that now?
Sagan.
Are we, I just have a comment for council though on this. Are we moving on to a different agenda?
Yeah, well, no, well, we'll see if they're, yeah, good, good point. We'll see if there's any public comment and then we can bring it back if there's any discussion. So thank, no, thank you. Thanks for making that comment. So do we have any anybody in the audience that would like to make any sort of public comment? Come on down, introduce yourself, state your name, and then, thank you. Amy, we'll pull it back for.
Good afternoon. I'm Bill Stillman. I live at 1761 Meadow Lane in Steamboat. My question goes to the methodology of the survey. At the beginning of the presentation, you mentioned that younger people are less inclined to fill out surveys than older people. And that can skew results depending on what the question is. And I'm wondering if something in the report kind of details or illuminates how different the responses would be if you didn't make those adjustments. And let me just give you like a kind of a silly example. But if the question was, do you think Steamboat Springs should spend X amount of money to provide a free shuttle for anyone over the age of 60 to go to the grocery store and back? You're probably going to get a highly skewed vote from an older population than a younger population. Same time, if you ask the voters, do you think you should lower the drinking age from 21 to 18? You're going to get a different set of voters with a different set of priorities. So how do you balance out or how do you measure the significance of the difference in the respondents? And are there other categories that you're manipulating, it's not the right word per se, but but adjusting the data to represent folks that maybe either didn't vote or voted to a lesser number? That's it. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
And do you want me to respond? I'm not sure of the protocol.
No, well, any, I think any other, we'll move on, other public comments? Go ahead and state.
Davis, 3429, Iowa, Waltham Court. I'd like to thank you guys for doing the community survey. That was really good data and really good intel to get from the citizens of the community. I got out of that was a high quality of life is directly tied to people's core values, which is access to green space, natural environment, the actual natural quality of the environment and the small town character. And as we infill our parks and our green space, I think we are going to lose our small town character. People from the survey don't want to drive. They want to be able to walk to their parks and they want to be able to access their parks without getting in a car and having to drive across town. They want to live close to work and they want to have affordable housing. And they want this development to go west of Steamboat Springs. The city park slide was very informative as walking the dogs and walking the parks. And most people visit our parks on a weekly basis. If not, they probably didn't go down into a daily. I know I visit our parks twice a day. And I'm here to urge you guys to do a land swap of Whistler Park to for some other parcel of property and to collaborate with the the teachers for affordable housing. We're for affordable housing for for our teachers. And it can come from just not only funds, but collaborating with them, discussing them, partnering with them, partnering with the citizens of Whistler Park to figure out how we can find a solution to help the teachers find some affordable housing. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. And if there's anybody online that would like to make a public comment, go ahead and raise your hand and we'll call on you. Yeah, that's true. And Alex, we're not seeing. Can you check our the display on our screen? Go ahead. You can go ahead if you'd like.
Okay, thank you. My name is Carol Kemp and I live at 3865 Whistler. And my comments tie to the survey that was just presented from a parks and housing perspective. I attended the Board of Education meeting last night and I distributed the Save Whistler Park B O E handout and I provided that to the council members in email. And I asked the superintendent, Dr. Wicks, during the break, if the school district has considered building teacher housing on the Butcher Knife Canyon annexation property. And Dr. Wicks told me that the city already has plans for the Butcher Knife property and that she has not seen any proposal for a land swap. And the Butcher Knife property is within walking distance to elementary, middle schools in downtown and ideal for teacher housing. And it's also the intent of the landowner for some of this land to be used for teacher housing. So the school district's moving ahead quickly on the feasibility to develop workforce housing on their Whistler property, under leased by the city right now until 2037. This property includes sports fields, dog park, recreation areas, and that would be lost if the development happens. Please consider communicating with Dr. Wicks as soon as possible about the status of the Butcher Knife property and a land swap of a portion of the Butcher Knife Canyon annexation property to the school district for teacher housing with the school district's 9.2 acre Whistler Park going to the city to make this 9.2 acres an official part of Whistler Park is extremely important for the community. So please consider. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, is there any other public comment? And I would just, all right, if not, let's go ahead and close public comment and bring it back for a council discussion in terms of any sort of, you know, concluding comments or thoughts in terms of takeaways.
So my one thought is when I go to slide, I can't read that, I don't know, 24. The Steamboat Springs government performance, only focusing on council. And I think too, the openness and transparency of city government is us as well. While I understand the COVID bump, I think this is an area that we need to work on as council members. And whether I have never, I, any organization I've been with is a survey, you know, like Brad and Winnie have talked about and Gary. And we take it and then decide what we want to do with it. And so I think whether it's at our work session in December, at some point, we as a council need to talk about these results. And I don't want to focus on anything else but what directly relates to us, which to me right now is openness and transparency and the confidence in city council. I'm sure there's probably a couple others in there, but I think we should have a conversation about it. And what are we doing to move that needle? Even if we are kind of where we were before COVID, it's not okay. That's just how I feel about it.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think, I mean, I certainly agree. I mean, and you know, and I think that's one of the things that we have, as a council have said, we want to be more open, open, we want to be more transparent, we want to be, you know, accountable. And so I think when you think about kind of the timing, right, of the survey vis a vis, you know, everything that we've gone through. So I, and I think, you know, Brad made the comment, right, in terms of what he heard today. So I would concur. I mean, in terms of having a conversation or just determining what steps, what additional steps can be taken and or how do we measure that?
And I want to say that I'm not saying this as a criticism. And actually, when I look at this number, the timing of the survey goes out of my mind. And so when I see the 27% or whatever it is for confidence in city council, that's me. And so, so please know, this is not a reply. I'm trying to say this is prior, this is me. And so that's where I'm coming from when I make that comment.
Would anybody else would like to make a comment?
Let me just add, tag along on this one. There's no reason on earth we can't talk about whether something having to do with confidence in city government should be a should be a council goal. Is that workable? Does it make any sense? But that's a perfect subject for December.
Exactly.
It is. It is a perfect subject. And also to find out what the trends are at these other communities who have similar timeframes as we have. Because we do notice that many of those things on a national and a state level are probably trending in the exact same direction. So I'd really like to look into that, too.
I wrote it down as a topic for December.
Thank you. Right. That list is starting to populate.
It is.
So thank you, thank you. And I think I think you're exactly right. I mean, in terms of looking to see what's going on in the other communities and, and, you know, again, right, to the extent that we at a local level can do anything to effectuate change at the national level in terms of confidence in government would be a lofty goal for sure.
Well, I want to chime in for just a second as well. What I heard from staff and I'm sorry, our survey staff as well. Sorry, I can't remember your name in this moment, was that we are trending with benchmark communities on confidence potentially. But what's where we're maybe not meeting the mark in even our benchmark communities is the level of services. So I don't know if that's correlated with confidence in city council and government. But I wonder, I would just be curious to hear staff's perspective. And if there's anything else we can, we can look to address. I know we're talking about different, different things to help improve our level of services. But maybe we can add that as a point within the conversation in December.
Certainly, and staff's perspective is much like councils. We saw that declining number as well. This is a statistically valid survey and we have to take those numbers seriously. We can share anecdotes about what we might think caused that, whether they're national, regional or local issues or the the election that happened just a month before the survey went out where the community was quite divided. But we don't really know. So we will, we'll take it seriously. We will huddle as staff and as a leadership team. We'll probably talk about this with middle management as well and 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 come up with a strategy as to how we can get those scores bumped back up.
Okay. Any final comments? Any final comments? Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Again, thanks for all the work that was done on this. And with that, we will move on to our second agenda item, which is on historic preservation. And Rebecca, are you going to kick us off?
All right. Good evening, Council. Rebecca Bessie, Planning Director. As Council President just said, we have a presentation for you tonight on historic preservate, presentation for you tonight on historic preservation. Let me make sure I get those words right. We are not actually looking for any specific direction from you all tonight, but we did want to give you an overview of the city's preservation program as well as some of the exciting and recent activities that we are undertaking. This topic, let's see. This topic is important to you. Culture and historic preservation has been identified by city council as one of your ongoing priority efforts. There are also a number of strategic objectives that are included in the city's strategic plan related to the outcome of preserving and honoring our historic heritage. So those are things that city staff is actively working to advance. And then lastly, I also wanted to point out that historic preservation is one of the goals that were identified in both the recently adopted downtown plan as well as the mountain area master plan. So we put those on the screen here in front of you just to illustrate how this topic aligns strategically with adopted plans, the city's strategic plan and city council goals. So I don't want to take up any more time, so I will turn it over to our historic preservation planner, Caitlin Baraby Smith, who will walk us through the presentation.
Thank you, Rebecca, for introducing me and I'm excited to walk you through our overview of our historic preservation program, what we're doing and where we're going. So first, just a quick introduction. What is historic preservation? We hear this term a lot. Oftentimes it's intermingled with conservation and they really do go hand in hand. So historic preservation is truly the preservation of places that are important to us. And it's not just our built environment, it is also our natural environment. It's not just what we see that is tangible in front of us, but what is intangible. So the histories, the oral histories and the stories of the people who, you know, built our Carver Power Plant here, who started the first ski jump in Howells and Hill. And it is really up to us as a local government, along with our community and community partners, to advance and to preserve and to ensure that these places are still here for generations to come. Historic preservation is truly a framework of urban planning and community development. They go hand in hand and they go parallel with one another. It is also an essential tool for other community issues that we know we have identified here in Steamboat Springs, such as sustainability. The greenest building built is the building that is already built. Economic strength, we know historic preservation does increase property values, not just of that specific place, but the entire neighborhood and neighboring neighborhoods. And then, of course, affordable housing, especially as our housing stock is limited within the confinements of our city limits. And we do have some photographs, some befores and afters are then and now scattered throughout. This is the Crawford House, which I'm sure you guys are all pretty familiar with. So again, the purpose of our historic preservation program is really to protect the places that are important and showcase, showcase the history of our local community and culture. Many places that we have locally are also very important at the state and national level. We break what we could consider a place into six different items. So you have buildings, properties, sites, objects, signs or structures. And they each have to meet certain criteria, but it helps us kind of identify which level a place may fall into. And we begin looking at what is considered significant and historic once it reaches 50 years of age. And that's a national benchmark. The state actually begins slightly earlier at 30 years of age. Our program began in 1999 and that is when we became an official certified local government. And I'll go into what that means next. And then we actually began our own local register of historic places, the Steamboat Springs Register of Historic Places in 2006. So about seven years after we began our program. What is a certified local government? A CLG are counties and municipalities that basically work and partner with the state historic preservation office. Every state has a state historic preservation office that basically takes on the duties of the federal government and then defers those duties back down to municipalities and counties. So we've opted in to take over certain areas or oversight of preservation for our local community here in Steamboat. It is a federal program that is overseen by the National Park Service. Historic preservation at the national level really began with the National Historic Preservation Act in 1966, which does set out the Secretary of Interior Standards for archaeology and historic preservation. So as a certified local government, we uphold and we commit to maintaining those standards and providing oversight for our community to work within those standards and meet those standards. We have to enact a local ordinance and we also have to maintain a historic preservation community. All of that means that we're integrating protections to ensure that places of importance are here for years to come. There are many benefits of becoming a CLG. One of those are CLG-only grant funds, also access to state historical grant funds. So CLG grant funds actually come from offshore oil and gas monies, whereas state historical grant funds come from revenues from statewide gambling. So two different pots of money that we're eligible for because we maintain this certified local government status. We also receive specialized technical support from the state. So everything from access to working with their architects to statewide preservation planners and urban planners to help work through complex issues that we might see here locally. We also have access to trainings and networking, which is great. In addition, there's an additional state tax credit, so a financial incentive because we maintain that CLG status. What's required of us again is that we enforce regulatory protection through our ordinance, through our code. We maintain a well-qualified historic preservation commission. Some of you just participated in our interviews, so you know that about 40% of our commission has to meet certain standards or professional qualifications that are actually set forth by the Code of Federal Regulations. We are required to conduct new surveys, so that's how we determine what places are of importance and significance for our community. And then we're also required to update old surveys. We have to make those surveys available for the public and we also have to allow for public participation through meetings and public comment. So our Steamboat Springs Register of Historic Places is our official list of historically designated buildings. In order to be on the list, you have to be determined eligible first. So we determine eligibility first through conducting surveys of neighborhoods and important places. And then second, when we receive building permits and then when we receive planning applications, that's when we look at typically a building or a landscape or a site and we review it against certain criteria to determine, could it meet the qualifications to be on our local register? We do require owner consent. And once you are on the local register, you do have to follow the Secretary of Interior Standards and our historic design guidelines. So those provide a framework, a very broad framework for what you can do with that cultural landscape, what you can do with your historic property. And locally, we have broken our designation into three different levels, historic resource, local landmark and historic district. More about registries. We have four registries nationwide. You'll see here, we have our national register, state register and route county register. And then we have our local city of Steamboat Springs register. It's actually pretty unique for a community in a county of our size to have both a county register and a local register. I think one of the biggest takeaways here is that only our local register is regulatory. So only our local register is providing actual protection and regulation over that site, that property, that sign. We have 42 properties on our local register, 11 of which would be considered sites, cultural landscapes. So the mineral springs that the city owns, along with Howells and Hill. We have one sign pictured on the bottom right and the remainder are all structures. Jumping to the left-hand side of this slide, we have 11 properties on the national register. We have one historic district that's on the national register with 36 contributing buildings downtown to that district. We have no historic districts at the local level, so we do not actually have regulatory control over our downtown historic district. You'll see this photograph of Steamboat Apartments located at 30211. I think this is a great example of modern Usonian architecture. You might not think that it's important at the national level, but it is. But again, there is no regulatory protection over this because the owners have not consented to put it on our local register. We, of course, have Howells and Hill, which is on the state register. We will be going for national designation again because some of the, I guess you could say newer features are reaching 50 years of age soon. And then on the route county register, I think 24 Maple Street, the former Burrows family home is a great example. It is our shining star of preservation here in Steamboat. It's a wonderful example of how you can preserve the front of a structure and yet build multiple additions and increase square footage towards the rear of the property. I believe they also have a separate apartment that's detached in the back. So I think I've kind of gone over our code. I just want to hit a few key points here. A lot of people think that when you are placing your home or your structure or landscape on a historic register, specifically one that's regulatory, that you cannot touch it. I like to share with the community that if that were the case, I wouldn't have a role here within the planning department and we wouldn't have a historic preservation commission. So again, the Secretary of Interior Standards and our local historic design guidelines are really broad. Our code allows for new additions to designated properties, new roofs, alterations to windows, porches, porch enclosures and a lot more. What it doesn't allow for is demolition, which we know that we're seeing at a higher rate across our community, not just in the Old Town area, but also in the mountain-based area, Fish Creek Falls and Brooklyn neighborhoods. So those, that's kind of our code when it comes to being on our local register. We do provide oversight for what we consider an eligible resource. So those that are 50 years of age that we have determined could hold enough significance to be on our local register. So we review every planning application and building permit and can provide administrative approval for eligible resources if those projects meet standards and guidelines. And so typically we'll work with the homeowners to see if they're open to meeting those guidelines and many of them are. So I think that's a big plus that we've seen in the last few years. If they don't meet the standards or guidelines, that's when we require an additional public hearing with the Historic Preservation Commission. And as you heard, one of the questions we asked in the community survey was, would our community support a longer stay of demolition? Currently, we have a 30-day stay of demolition that's required for eligible resources because we don't have the regulatory oversight to say, no, you cannot demolish that building unless the owner has said, yes, I want to place that on the local register. And I believe the number was around 66 or 68% were in strong support or somewhat supportive of that. So that's a really positive figure. And so how do we compare to other CLGs? We often hear, you know, in Steamboat Springs, our historic preservation program should have more teeth, we should have more regulatory action, we should have more control. There are 70 CLGs across Colorado. And when you compare, you know, not the nitty gritty semantics of our ordinance, but the basics of our regulatory oversight and code, our program is almost exactly the same as 50 out of 70 CLGs. I kind of pulled some figures from those that are not the same. 21 municipalities or counties across Colorado do not require owner consent for designate, for designation. And then 16 require owner consent for historic designation, but they don't enforce mandatory compliance or regulation over that. And I think the big takeaway here is the beauty of being a certified local government is to really work with our elected officials, to work with our community partners, to work with our city government and figure out what makes sense for our community. Because every community is different. We all have a different historic fabric that we want to preserve. So just a few takeaways. We, what are we doing now? We're implementing our downtown plan and mountain area master plan. They specifically recommended we complete a historic context and survey of the mountain base area. We have done that. We are continually working with Main Street currently. We are launching a legacy business program to help protect businesses that have been in Steamboat for 30 years or more. And we're planning to update the national historic downtown district. And then I just want to touch on our partners. We couldn't do what we do without partnerships here. So we partner with historic Route County. They're a preservation advocacy group. And then Tread of Pioneers is really this institutional bank of knowledge when it comes to the actual histories and the people. So we couldn't, I don't think we could preserve Steamboat in the way that we are without our partners. We designated 13 properties to our local register in the last two years. And we are planning to complete surveys of Brooklyn Fairview and Fish Creek. We're contracted for our very first citywide preservation plan and update to historic design guidelines. That update was also a recommendation of the mountain area master plan and we're grant-funded for our education engagement and outreach strategy. And again, the citywide historic preservation plan is going to be that guiding document for the next five to 10 years for our historic preservation program. And it will provide those formal recommendations for broader policy changes, code changes and just preservation in general for our community. I just wanted to briefly go over some of these survey results. It was very interesting to see redevelopment of nonhistoric properties in city limits was at 82%. I think that showcases people's support for not redeveloping historic properties here in Steamboat. And then we had everywhere from 79% support to 64% support for creating historic districts with majority consent of ownership, creating incentives for preservation of buildings important to history here, developing rules for altering and constructing additions to historic buildings, and then again, establishing the 90-day waiting period for demolition. I do want to point out that currently, if you would like to have a historic district here in Steamboat, it requires 100% owner consent. That means if you have four homes within a block, you have to have the consent of every single owner on that block. So when we ask this question in the community, do you support the creation of historic districts with majority consent? That would mean, you know, 51% on the block. We're just looking at a different percentage base of numbers, which is pretty standard with most communities and most CLGs. And then creating or developing rules for altering, constructing additions to historic buildings, we already have those rules in place in terms of being able to regulate and enforce compliance with additions if they're on our local register. So this would look at some broader design guidelines for eligible resources across our community. Again, so we're really going to look towards some of these survey outcomes. Again, so we're really going to look towards some of these survey outcomes. And a lot of the community outreach, we're going to do with the Preservation Plan and the Outreach and Engagement Strategy to look at what level of change is going to inform action and what is going to be a broader policy change that we're going to need to work with our elected officials on and really garner community support for in the future versus what are some low-hanging fruit that we could potentially accomplish before the Historic Preservation Plan is complete? Some of that could be removing the thirty-day public hearing requirement. That's where HPC is unique. Board of Adjustment and Planning Commission don't have that. And it kind of sometimes puts our commission in a pickle because we have to have multiple special meetings so we can make sure people's building permits can continue on and get approved. And then just looking at some simple definition changes. So whether that's of our historic district or what an eligible resource is. So you'll see, you know, some low-hanging fruit could be to allow for an eligibility determination of a building within our National Historic District downtown at the age of thirty years old versus fifty, which would be in line with how the state does that now. We have some pretty important buildings downtown that are forty-nine years old or forty-seven years old. So again, just to wrap this up, historic preservation, it's really, I like to say, preserving the tangible, preserving the intangible. It creates a sense of place. It assists with other community issues, other community goals. And we are really looking for the support of our community in terms of feedback and engagement. We'll be doing community engagement sessions and opportunities with the Historic Preservation Plan and the Strategy. And we did actually ask for some of our Historic Preservation Partners, along with our Historic Preservation Commission, to just generate their wish list of thoughts prior to this work session. So we have a good understanding of where they would like to see this program going. So that kind of sets us up with our first initial kind of listening session to move us forward with that. Steamboat is hosting our statewide preservation-on-the-road portion of the conference coming up, September sixth through the eighth. And then we do have local members of our community sitting on a statewide committee that is going to be planning historical celebrations for Colorado's Semi-Cess Quintennial and our National Cess Quintennial. We will open it up for questions and discussion.
All right, thank you.
What CPI?
Colorado Preservation Incorporated. They're like the statewide version of Historic Route County.
That's what I thought. I knew it wasn't consumer pricing.
No. All right, so this is a work session. Just fire away with questions.
I just, I think it's great what you're doing. I think, I think the awareness of the fact that preserving the exterior of these buildings is important, but there is flexibility there to make changes short of demolition. And in the interiors, you really do have tremendous flexibility in terms of what you can do. So I think, I don't, I don't think the community necessarily understands that well. And if we can create that awareness and education and whatnot, maybe we can really make a dent in increasing the amount of historic buildings we have in town. So I appreciate what you're doing.
Thank you.
Caitlin, on slide twelve-eleven, you talk about the thirty-day stay of demolition, and then you talked about as the lower fruit on the tree is to removing that. And then up on one of these was talking about a ninety-day. So I'm a little confused on what you guys are presenting to us. Let me see where I get that.
Yeah, so currently, when, when we first showcased the thirty-day stay of demolition, we were talking about what we currently require for an eligible resource.
Okay.
And the low-hanging fruit code amendments, we're talking about removing the thirty-day public hearing requirement. So two separate things. The public hearing requirement is when we get a building, typically it comes in the form of building permits. And for eligible resources, any building permit where, let's say it's windows, roof, addition, porch enclosure, where it doesn't meet the Secretary of Interior Standards or our local design guidelines, we have to push that to a public hearing. And our code says that we have to host that public hearing within thirty days receipt of a, of the application, a complete application. So sometimes those permits will come in just at the nick of time where we can't get the materials in with enough time for the regularly scheduled HPC member meeting. And so we have to then work with each HPC member to find another date for a public hearing that we typically host in the middle of the regularly standard meetings. So it just accounts for more meetings, and it also holds our permitting and planning applications up. So that's the, removing the thirty-day public hearing requirement. Back to the thirty-day stay of demolition, that's what we currently have. We did ask the community in the survey if they would be open to expanding that to a ninety-day stay of designation. And that did receive strong or majority support. And that stay of demolition at ninety days is what we had in place prior to two thousand and seven.
Can, can you just speak to the benefit of that?
Yes. Our building department is wonderful, and they process permits very fast, right? So when a demolition permit is received by the building department, they are typically issued within three days. So sometimes we're unaware that a demolition is happening, and we have three days to research the home, figure out its importance if we don't already have an existing survey, and then make a decision on that. So when it comes in, after that demolition permit is set for public hearing, we only have thirty days before that permit can be issued. So that's the way our code reads. HPC can't deny the permit. They have to approve the demolition permit, but the permit stays unissued for thirty days. And, you know, I think a lot of times, as, as Steve was saying, there are a lot of myths with historic preservation. And there's a lot of education that needs to happen. And sometimes people have already gone out and paid for their architectural plans or their planning documents. And they haven't thought about the opportunity of, how could I repurpose and adaptively reuse the structure that's here now? How could I gain square footage with incorporating the structure into what I envision? And it only allows us thirty days to do that. So having ninety days would broaden it significantly and allow for more time to work with the public.
How much? Congratulations on this position with the city. You know, this is the first time we've had a historic preservation planner in a while. And so I appreciate you filling that in. When we think about the current historic homes that are, could be eligible, and there's owners that may sell that home to someone else, and then that person buys it, and then again, goes and hires an architect and starts making all these changes to this historic building. And then we get it a day late and a dollar short, and they're like, we, we want to tear it down. In your experience, that you've been here in the year that you've been here so far, what do you think would be a good policy change that we could, you know, get in front of upset owners?
Well, I think, you know, historic preservation, it's an effective planning tool. And what it should allow for us to do is get out in front of people who have actually already made their plans, right? And so I think if there's a way that we could tailor our process and timeline, both within planning applications and also working closely with the building department, I think that would go a long way. It's, you know, working with a historic home is absolutely no different than working with a home that was built twenty years ago. And it is sometimes interesting to see, you know, someone would like to subdivide their lot. Well, the first thing they're going to do is call the Planning Department, and they can't complete other steps until they've worked with Bob, Rebecca, Toby. And the same kind of process and timeline, I think, should be a little more firm. I think that could go a long way without kind of a large process, or I'm sorry, a large policy change. And then notification to our homeowners. So actually notifying owners who have homes that are over fifty years of age. We do have a list. I think there are about just under eighteen hundred homes currently that were built before nineteen seventy-four. And we are, according to our current code, required to notify them that their home is over fifty years of age. And so breaking that down upfront and providing them with the information upfront that we are here to work with them through their planning applications and building permits, I think would go a long, long way. So people haven't spent tens and hundreds of thousands of dollars on surveying and architects and engineers before they submit their building permit, which is typically where we might see the frustrated community member.
And again, and my intention is to get it before they're, you know, while they, before they hire an architect. Hey, by the way. And one aspect that may be an interesting perspective to show to owners who have lived here for forty years and fifty years in some of these homes, would they be eligible if they put the home on the historic reservation list, registration, to take advantage of, I mean, if a local homeowner want to replace the windows in their house? And windows are expensive, and they need to get them in and out and put together, and it's my old house, and we can't afford the property tax, let alone buy new windows. But gosh, we would love them because this house was built fifty years ago, and they're single-pane windows. Could that local homeowner apply for some of those tax benefits that are available currently to get their house, in a sense, updated and upgraded using some of these resources that are available?
Absolutely. And you, you're kind of ahead of the game because you were in our HPC interviews. So I like the attention there, Michael. Yes. So if, if a homeowner had an eligible home, they could place it on our local historic register. And for residential properties at the state level, you can receive up to a certain percentage, but not over fifty thousand dollars for qualifying home improvements. So that can be anything from a new roof to window improvements. There are, you know, of course, compliance-based factors with all of this, to updating your electrical system, to also an interior bathroom remodel. So even though our, you know, homes on our local register and our, our current code only regulate the exterior, a lot of those benefits that you're talking about are available also for interior remodels, so.
So I think that would be something to really market and promote from the Historic Preservation Department to say, in other words, to get in front of it, let's, what else can the Historic Preservation Committee do as opposed to telling us, no, don't demolish it? And there's so much more that I've learned in this short period of time. And I think that now that we have you on staff, this is the kind of task that we should kind of consider, that you put some effort to. At least of those eighteen hundred homes, there may be some people that, we may be able to capture some of those on the historic registration and then preserve those in perpetuity or in the future, and allow those people to take a, get a remodel in two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five, and never even considered that.
Absolutely. And I think some of that myth busting, along with sharing those incentives and benefits, would be helpful as well.
Yeah, it's, as we're sitting in this building right here, I kind of, and I, and I was sitting out just in the little foyer there, and I was looking at the trusses of that power side of the building and how they've maintained it, yet we got to build this whole facility and part of that, those meeting rooms, maintaining the historic of the, this property. And so we know that it can be done, but it has to be done before people, before the architect starts saying, no, no, we don't want to do it that way. We want this. And so I just, I, I think having you on board is going to be helpful in the future. So I'm glad you're here.
Thank you.
Other questions? I was just gonna, I would, maybe just a question about historic districts and just explaining them a little bit more. You know, and particularly as it relates to, you know, like your comment about a hundred percent of the properties versus eighty percent, and just maybe make that in more layman's term in terms of what, what does that actually mean?
Yes, so a historic district is a larger area of space that you typically draw a physical boundary around. And you also apply a legal property, its own legal property boundary. And I would say in almost all, we'll say ninety-nine, we're the one percent here of our CLGs, you have a lower threshold to be able to establish a historic district in terms of owner consent. And historic district doesn't just mean, oh, anything that's historic within a box that you draw around it. You really have to be linking the significance in terms of theme or the period in which the homes were built. So for instance, on Seventh Street, many of those homes were built by Art Gumpfrik. And so that would be a wonderful example of a historic district that we could have. But currently, our code requires us to have one hundred percent of the owners within Seventh Street's consent to even propose the historic district, rather than saying, we have four wonderful homes built by this architect. One of them happens to be on the corner of the street, which affects the boundary you're drawing. And we only need sixty percent of consent to be able to establish that district. In some areas, it's based upon number. You may establish a boundary, and you need four owners' consent. So I think there are a lot of ways you can do it, and I think it, it's really important for, for communities, so.
So let's, let's just play out the Seventh Street and the architect that you just mentioned. And so how does, so just helping us understand, or helping me understand from it, to the extent that it's in a historic district, and there are homes that weren't built, right, by that architect? What, what, how does that then impact the other homes that are in that historic district?
That's a great question, and I think this is a really good example to help walk through some of the nitty-gritty nuances. So let's say you have four homes built by that architect. You have three other homes within that district boundary that are still eligible, but for other reasons. And then the remainder of the homes, they're not historically important at all. Maybe one of them is brand new. It was built three years ago. The three homes that are not built by that architect, still historically important. The other homes that aren't historically important at all are considered non-contributing to the district. Whereas the four homes built by that one architect are considered contributing to that district. So if you were looking at, let's say, a commercial oak historic district, you might, that linking theme might be structures that were originally residences that now serve as commercial properties. And there are only so many of those, right? So there are a lot of different themes. And going back to the Secretary of Interior Standards and the National Park Service, there's a really long list of themes that we can pick from, so. Does that help explain a little bit?
It does, exactly. It does. Thank you.
Do you have a follow-up question? Like, so I was thinking about that as well. Have we approached any neighborhoods to become part of a historic district?
I can, do you want to chime into the former question real quick?
Yeah, before we get to that question, if Caitlin, can you speak to how contributing versus non-contributing properties within a district are treated a little bit differently? Because I think that's a really key point. And it's also very important as to why we are looking to potentially pursue lowering that owner consent threshold because currently even the non-contributing property owners would have to consent.
Thank you. That is a great point. So, oh, the computer's not plugged in here anymore. It's okay. So only the contributing properties in a historic district would fall under that regulatory oversight. Those three, three structures that are eligible. would still have to go through the mandatory historic preservation review. And they would still be encouraged to follow our standards and guidelines. But if they didn't, we couldn't make them, quote unquote. And then again, of course, the structures that were not historically significant at all would be determined ineligible and there would be, you know, no historic preservation review. Same with those that were built after 1974.
Does that help? Yeah, thank you.
And then you were asking about approaching owners. I've had some discussions with a few owners. I will say that a district's eligibility changes over time. We have identified potential historic districts in our residential Old Town surveys. Seventh Street is one of those. Seventh Street has changed significantly in the last two years. And so even if we were to lower that threshold, that would really determine, would we even have enough of those homes that still maintain that quality? With that said, that's just one example. Interestingly enough, I've had more conversations with community members and residents in the mountain base area about historic districts and outside of Old Town. Because I think that they're seeing the fabric of, of, of their cul-de-sacs and of their streets change pretty significantly, just as the residents in Old Town. But so yes, and, but I would say more concentrated in the mountain base area.
Well, we're teeing you up. Okay. Anybody with, with not enough to do tomorrow? Or not enough to do on Friday? And go to the corner of 12th and Oak? And watch them raise Marshall House tomorrow? And go back on Friday and watch them move it to its new home?
So I'm glad you brought that up. If I may just add to one of your questions. Said, why would 90 days be important in terms of a 30 day stay of demolition? I've been lucky enough to, you know, this is, the moving of Marshall House is between two private parties, but the city has an interest in the fact that it is one of our most important resources. So I've been able to just help facilitate with both of those private parties. And it's been difficult in 30 days. So in terms of lining up, you know, both parties have had to line up architects, construction companies, general contractors, engineers, surveyors, and then permitting as well. You know, grade and fill permit, right of way permit, changes to your demolition permit. And so to do all of that in 30 days is almost impossible.
And it couldn't have been done without you.
Thank you.
And it couldn't have been done without the owners of that lot who have given up, I, I, I can't quantify it, but a significant sum of money to bear with the historic preservation and wait it out. They've lost a development season, so it's real money to them. But they, they were focused on not only doing their business, but on saving this property.
All right, any other, any other council questions? All right, well, we can open it up to the public and see if anybody has any comments on the conversation that we're having regarding historic preservation. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to make a comment? And/or if there's anybody online that would like to make a comment, please raise your hand. All right, we're not seeing anybody in the audience and nor are we seeing anybody in, online. I don't know, Dakota, did you have any questions?
Again, you all kind of covered all my questions, but the one thing that I guess I wanted to add is just if there are any requests of counsel for how we can support historic preservation, changing, you know, from the 30 day to 90 day or offering more incentives. I don't know what, what there is that we could do, but I'd love to hear that at any point as well.
No, thank you. Thanks for teeing that question up. So I mean, again, right, I think you've put some things here. I mean, what is the next step from, from your perspective?
So again, we are under contract with consultants to complete a historic preservation plan. And so that's really when we're going to start doing some of this outreach, both internal work, working with the community, and then continuing conversations hopefully at this level to really look into what are some broader policy and code changes that could benefit our program. Prior to that, because we know that that's going to take about a year, a little less than a year. I think we're going to really start looking at some of that low hanging fruit and working with, with legal and then also working with our preservation partners on what can we do now to, to accomplish some small steps?
And remind us, what, what's your timeline for the historic preservation plan?
We should have it complete by June of 2024. There might be a slight extension just for administrative stuff that needs to happen, you know, with any grant. And then I will say back to what Ed was saying, one of our next steps is going to be to reach out to homeowners of 50 years of age. That'll happen before the end of this year. It's also required by our code, so we're just going to expand that a little bit. And then we are going to be under contract with a consultant for education, outreach and engagement strategy. And I think having a marketing plan similar to both what Steve and Ed were saying to help kind of guide those communications forward with the different target audiences throughout our community, our community is going to be great. So not just homeowners, but also the professionals, right? Architects, engineers. We have wonderful engineers in this community and a lot of them do a lot of design work as well, which again, affects historic preservation. Contractors and then real estate agents, I think, is another group that we could really work with in terms of education. And that strategy also has a timeline that's grant funded and that timeline is about the same as the preservation plan. It's technically longer, but we'd like to complete them at the same time, so.
All right, well, any further discussion or comments by council? No, we just want to say thank you for.
We're, we're getting some signals from Winnie.
Oh. Thank you. Okay, all right. Well, thank you. Thanks for bringing that to our attention. Molly Rusher, if you'd like to unmute and identify yourself and your address, you have three minutes to make a public comment. Oops, we lost you. Molly, if you'd like to make a comment, go ahead and raise your hand and unmute, please. Okay, well, I'll go ahead and we'll see if she comes back online. But in the meantime, we just want to say thank you, Caitlin. Thank you, Rebecca. We really appreciate your work in this area and look forward to what you find out as you move forward with your consultant. And, you know, to the extent that it makes sense for you to come back to council and run some more of these ideas by us or educate, take the opportunity to educate us. We appreciate, would appreciate that. So thank you. Okay, all right. With that, why don't we go ahead and take a 10 minute break? So we'll be back a little, what, 7:07 to start our agenda item three, which is the 2A Trails Project update. So we'll see you then.
All right, we're going to go ahead and reconvene. And thanks, everybody. We've had a little bit of technical difficulty, but I think we're hopefully we're all set and ready to go. So we will bring up Agenda Item Three, which is the Two Way Trails Project Update. And I think we'll hear from Winnie, our Special Projects and IGS Manager.
Good evening, everyone. So I am here to pretty much just give a very broad overview of the Trail of the Two Way Trails update. And my reason for doing that is this is a project that started in 2013, really. And we have a new council. And so I want to make sure that you have this big picture, this understanding of what two-way trails is and what it isn't and what the rules are for it. So that when we get into actually asking you to make a decision, you've got this broad understanding. So to be super clear, I'm not asking you to make a decision tonight. I am providing information. And I think it's really important to note that within the Two Way Trails Initiative, the city relies on land managers to carry out their own planning and decision-making processes. This includes the city's decision-making processes. So the Two Way Trails Committee's role is to really look at the eligible projects and recommend feasible projects for funding. And within that, the city has worked with all of the project managers or all of the land managers for the eligible projects. So this has included the BLM, the US Forest Service, the school district, private landowners, the city's Parks and Rec Department and others. So just that is a very fundamental part of our process. And when we do come to ask city council for a decision, we will be asking you for a funding decision. The city is in this project is a funding entity. The city, as a land manager, decides what can or cannot happen on city-owned property. And then that comes to the Two Way Committee for a recommendation and then comes to you for that. It's a very similar thing for any other land that land manager for a trail within the Two Way Trails process. So the land manager is the land manager. They do their thing and they can either ask us for funding for an eligible project or not, right? The city is not the one that's designing projects that are not on our land, I guess, is the way I'd say that. So that's super important to note. So I'll start with what is, why do we have two-way? We have two-way because in 1986, the community voted in a special election to approve an accommodations tax of 1%. This is the language that was in that initial 1986 accommodations tax ballot question and ordinance. The dollars that we are talking about are accommodations tax dollars that follow the 1986 ballot language. Note that we did in our last election, vote to expand the uses of accommodations tax that specifically did not include the two-way dollars. So the two-way dollars are governed by the original 1986 accommodation tax ballot language. Then those dollars were spent on any number of different projects for many years, the biggest one of which was the Haymaker Golf Course. When the Haymaker Golf Course bonds were nearing the end of payment, city council chose to go through a process to identify what to fund with accommodations tax dollars. They formed a special citizens committee called the Accommodations Tax Committee. There were a large number of proposals that were presented by community members to that committee. They were gone through over about a year period. And then two of those proposals were selected, were recommended by the committee to council and council approved those proposals going to the voters. And so the voters approved the two-way ballot initiative in 2013, which allocated a certain amount of funding to the Yampus Street Project and a larger amount of funding to the Two Way Trails Project. The specific ballot language specifically identified, it's the last sentence, trails in and around the city in accordance with the Trails Alliance proposal. And so as a result of that specific language in the ordinance, in the ballot language, the only trails that are eligible for the Two Way Trails dollars are those trails that are in the Trails Alliance proposal. So what is in the Trails Alliance proposal? And what is this project? It was approved in 2013. It was supposed to get 10 years of funding. It has gotten 10 years of funding. So that's $5.1 million over 10 years. Again, to be eligible, the trail has to be listed in the Trails Alliance proposal. At this point, we have $2.2 million approximately left in dollars in the, in the two-way pot of funds. Super important to note that we have $5.9 million in requests for funds for eligible feasible projects, right? So we have double the amount of requests than we have money available to fund them, which is a huge point that I want to make. And I will go over that a little bit here. So the Trails Alliance proposal was put together by the Trails Alliance, which involved stakeholder groups who were interested in trails in the community. The Trails Alliance did not include land managers. They did not follow existing plans for trails. It was a group of people who said, hey, we want trails. We want trails here. Here's the idea for what we want for each trail. And so that has led to some complications over time, meaning my job was to go to the land manager and say, hey, the citizens of Steamboat Springs have approved $5.1 million for trails that are listed, trails that are eligible through the Trails Alliance proposal. There are a certain number, X number of trails that happened to be proposed for your property. I'm here to say that if you are interested in planning for trails, whatever you feel you need, you can come ask us for money to do that. And if you're interested in building a trail that we view as being an eligible trail, then you can come and ask us for those dollars to build the trail that is eligible. So the entire process has been based on land managers using whatever processes they have, and they all have different processes, to identify whether or not they want to think about what trails might be useful for them in order to meet demand, manage recreation, improve transport, whatever, whatever their reasoning is. Because again, they follow their rules for what they do on their land. And, and the Trails Alliance proposal and the Two Way Trails Initiative just means that the city has money for some things if the property owner or the land manager is interested. So within that, we have identified, or the Two Way Trails Committee, and I've got two members of the committee behind me here. The Two Way Trails Committee has identified that there are 14 trails in the Trails Alliance proposal that are not feasible to be built, either because they are, the land manager has not approved it or because there are no trail easements that would make that project feasible at this time. To be super clear, because I know council has been getting a lot of emails about this. The Core Trail West is not listed in the Trails Alliance proposal and is not an eligible trail for the Two Way Trails dollars. To be also clear, outside of the Two Way Trails process, the city has put accommodations tax dollars into that project. The Core Trail South is in the Trails Alliance proposal and would be eligible for dollars. However, the easements that are required to make that trail feasible are not in the hand of the city, who is the project manager on that one. And furthermore, when city council had the ability to construct that trail in 2014, because we had easements, time-limited easements at that time, the cost was $4.4 million for a mile of trail. And council at that time decided that it was too expensive and not worth the $4.4 million for the one mile of trail. So at this time, that trail is also on our not feasible list because there is not, the trail easements are not in hand. There are 15 trails or projects that were completed. There is one project, one trail, that is currently under construction. And there are 17 trails that the Two Way Committee has looked at that we feel could potentially be feasible. The final answer on whether or not those are feasible will not be known until the Mad Rabbit NEPA is, issues a final decision. But based on the draft decision, the Two Way Trails Committee spent several meetings going through the proposed trail in the Mad Rabbit NEPA and looking at whether or not that there was that trailer and that equivalent trail in the Trails Alliance proposal. Again, the Trails Alliance proposal being conceptual in nature has created some, some, some problems from a land manager planning standpoint. Because land managers are going to do what they feel, what they're tasked to do for their properties. But where we have come to is this concept of an equivalent trail. Because the Trails Alliance proposals were conceptual, but they do include for each trail or project, there's a name, a description, a purpose, a length, a classification and a location. The description has been really critical for identifying whether or not, and the purpose has been really critical for identifying whether or not the trail that is being proposed by the land manager is equivalent to the trail that is listed in the Trails Alliance proposal. The classification has been super challenging because the city's classification for a trail difficulty is different than the BLM's classification for a trail difficulty, which is different than the Forest Service's classification for a trail difficulty, which is different than the Trails Alliance proposal. So that one has been super challenging to, it's like apples and oranges, but you try to make it match. And then the location has pretty much not been great for any of the trails that we have built thus far. Because again, this was conceptual. People looking at a map going, hey, where would we like to have a trail? And not a land manager saying, where would I need a trail to go to avoid sensitive wildlife, wetlands, whatever? The Trails Alliance proposal does have this sentence in every description of every trail and every project. And that is, this project and its map location are subject to change during the land manager's final planning and approval process. And in actual fact, pretty much almost everything that the city has funded has been an equivalent trail. It has not been exactly what was put in the Trails Alliance proposal because land managers in doing their jobs identify a better place for a trail to go. And that, or they might say, you know, to meet all of the needs, this, like for instance, the Forest Service does not have single-use trails. So if the Trails Alliance proposal proposes a single-use trail, that, that's not going to be, you know, like that's not something the Forest Service does. So the Forest Service is not, they, they could do a trail that is best for downhill mountain biking, but it is going to be a multiple-use trail because that is their standard. So it's, it's types of, it's that type of thing that the Two Way Trails Committee has really had to wade through when identifying what has been approved by a land manager compared to what the Trails Alliance proposal had. As a part of this whole process, we have come to council. We, we worked with the city attorney. We came up with this concept of functional equivalence to determine whether or not we could fund a proposed trail. And again, that was really looking at the description, the purpose, the type of trail that it was in a generic location. I can, if you need me to, I can provide some specific examples of what's, what that has looked like in some of the trails that we have done. The Two Way Trails Committee is the group that has been tasked to look at the Trails Alliance proposal, look at the, the request for funding from the land managers and make a recommendation to city council. So the Trails Alliance Committee was established via resolution. That is in your packet. Every committee has been appointed by city council and you can read the specific language from the resolution establishing the Two Way Trails Committee here. So the direction, the specific direction given to the Two Way Trails Committee is to, in essence, ensure that the things funded with Two Way Trails dollars meet the language of the 1986 accommodations tax ballot. So that's what they have spent the last, well, since 2013 doing. The Two Way Trails Committee process has been, they initially started with ranking all of the projects. The land managers were then approached and said, hey, you know, are you interested in partnering or really getting funding from the city to do trails on your property? The land managers have gone off and done their planning processes, typically funded by the city, and then come back once they've got an approval and ask for funding to construct the trail. And then the Two Way Committee considers those requests for funding, prioritizes them and makes recommendations to city council. To be super clear, up until the next recommendation, pretty much the, the Two Way Committee has recommended funding all those things that were feasible to do because they wanted things to happen. And it's taken a while for land managers to decide what to do and how to do it. So they do have one final, there's again, $2.2 million left. And so they have one final recommendation to make to you of all of the 17 projects, assuming the Mad Rabbit NEPA ever gets approved, and we'll see about that, to bring a recommendation to you as to how to spend the remaining $2.2 million. That is currently scheduled for September 17th. It may get pushed back because we don't want to make that recommendation until the Forest Service has published a final decision on the Mad Rabbit NEPA. Other outcomes of the Two Way Trails process is in order to meet the need for ongoing maintenance of the trails funded by Two Way Trails Funds, we, the city, I worked with the head of the Forest Service to set up the Trail Maintenance Endowment Fund through the Yamp Valley Community Foundation. Super excited to say that it has over a million dollars in it. Our goal was a million, was $100,000 a year. 2025 is the last year of that 10-year campaign. So we're ahead of schedule. And that is super exciting in terms of the money it generates each year for trail maintenance on public lands in Route and Moffett County. The Wildlife Habitat Improvement Fund has $145,000 in it. The goal of those dollars is to, that fund is to utilize those dollars to improve wildlife habitat for the benefit of wildlife in Route County. to improve wildlife habitat for the benefit of wildlife in Route County. And then last, the Route Recreation and Conservation Roundtable was started as a way to try to bring opposing viewpoints to the table to hopefully establish some common ground around, you know, how do we balance the desire for recreation, the need to manage that recreation so that it doesn't have a huge negative impact on wildlife, and the desire for a strong, to have wildlife habitat and a strong wildlife. So those are some of the other outcomes of the 2A process. Do you have any questions? And I should say, one of the things that I can do is on the trails that we have funded, I can walk you through what the trail equivalencies were. On the trails that remain, I could walk you through what we think the trail equivalencies are. The 2A Committee has spent a lot of time on that. They have a lovely PowerPoint presentation that we can give you. If you want that, I would recommend that we schedule that for another council meeting just to walk you through that. That being said, I would almost, I would opine that if our city attorney reviews the trail equivalencies and feels that they are legitimate, that really the issue for council is not, is the trail legitimately equivalent? It's, do you want to fund it? Right? Like, we could spend a lot of time going into publicly, is this trail equivalent or not? And at the end of the day, the question that I have for you, because I have Dan to tell me whether or not the trail, he feels the trails are equivalent. The question that I have for council is going to be, what do you want to fund? We have $2.2 million left. We have $5.9 million in requests. So my question to you is, what do you want to fund? And I'd rather focus on that and not spend a ton of council time trying to walk you through the detailed analysis of each specific trail and why it was equivalent or why we feel it will be equivalent. So I'm putting that out there as we can go, you can, you can tell me which path you want to go down. And at the end of the day, we have more than twice the amount of requests than we have dollars for funding.
Well, I was gonna say, why don't we start with questions and discussion?
All right, so to start off on the, I'd rather talk about the end game than getting there because I appreciate you going there. $5.9 million, how much of that requests are within the city limits of Steamboat Springs? All of it?
No, no, probably maybe half of it.
And is those, those half requested funds for potentially functionally equivalent trails within the city limits? Or, I mean, we still don't know yet, does it have to go through that process? Or are these all already funded within that parameter?
So what the 2A Trails Committee has done is they have gone through the process of looking at every trail that has not yet been built. And whether or not that trail is, is potentially feasible. And that means, is the landowner, is the land manager interested? And what would the cost of that, you know, and how does that trail rank based on the criteria that city council set for them? And then what is the cost of that? Meaning, what has the land manager requested in funding? And that's where I get the $5.9 million. And approximately, out of that, 2.1 are within, no, 1.6 is outside of the city limits. And the remaining dollars, the remaining dollars out of that 5.9 total potential requests is within the city limits.
And again, that potential requests are known right now to be functionally equivalent for the ballot language?
Yes. Yeah, the committee spent a couple of months literally going trail by trail, description by description to-
Well, I think the challenge that we have right now is that we get so much about spending money outside of the city limits on this Mad Rabbit issue. It's what a lot of the emails that we get. And it was just more of a curiosity of like, how much, it seems like a lot of the citizens that voted for it wanted the West Core Trail. And we know that that's funded and that's already ready to go. So it's good to have this discussion publicly. And then we can have more of a decision in September. Totally love that idea. Coming to September, it'd be curious to know, of the money that's left remaining, you know, I'm leaning more toward funding things within the city limits, but I'm not 100% sold on that. I just don't know what any of those proposals look like. I may not want to do any of them.
Right. And so if you're interested, what we have, the 2A Trails Committee, you can talk to them, has gone through and looked at all the remaining trails. They have ranked them based on the criteria that was set by city council in the resolution that established the committee. So city council specifically said, we want you to make recommendations using these criteria. And those criteria are the criteria from the 1986 ballot language. And so that is, does the trail promote tourism, enhance the vitality of Steamboat Springs as a premier destination resort, enhance the community identity, enhance the environmental desirability of the community, and enhance the economic health of Steamboat Springs? So the, the direction that council has given to the 2A Committee is to prioritize the trails based on those criteria. And that is what they'd have done. And that is what they will bring back to you. And when they bring it back to you, they can bring you as much or as little information as you would like about each trail and why they felt it hit certain parts of those criteria.
Well, understanding that criteria was subjective by a previous council, can this council change that criteria?
The criteria was set in the 1986 ballot language.
So we can't change it?
No, but I think where we might have some latitude, right? I mean, and just, I mean, I was just looking at the, the attachment for the trail status. And kind of to your question, right? In terms of how much of the money could be allocated to trails within the city limits, right? There's a number of these that were proposed in terms of in the, in the city, but have been removed, right? For various different reasons. And, you know, and particularly, right, we get a lot of, we've gotten a lot of comment, right? And for anybody that wants to know, I think all the comments that we received on this item is in the yellow rainbow item there on the back shelf. But, you know, in 2013, you know, we hear a lot from the community that a lot of people voted for this because they wanted the trail, the Core Trail South, right, to be extended to the Legacy Ranch. And so I guess, you know, I, I have a, you know, really a question about that. I mean, in terms of, when was the last time that we asked those land managers or the owners of the land and the easements that we needed? Because I know we just got recently one from Snow Country, right? Within the last-
We did.
-year. And so, there's one or two other trail, one or two other landowners.
My role has been to ask the land manager, is this feasible? And so I would have to defer to Parks and Rec. And I'm assuming that they would need to do some work to put together an answer to that. Because my role has been to essentially just ask to the land manager, is this trail feasible? And if so, are you interested in asking for money? I do want to clarify, just saying it a different way. There's $4.3 million of requests from trails that are eligible and feasible within the city limits. We only have 2.2.
That's fine.
Can you explain that, Winnie? Because I, I looked at your 47 total projects. It's saying, awaiting funding, funding is 17 trails, projects. 14 of those 17 are within the Mad Rabbit.
Correct.
Okay, so that leaves three-
Correct.
-outside of that, which are inside the city limits?
The Strawberry Park Loop Trail, which is a trail that would be on school district property. We've done the design, we've funded design on that. And the school district has requested funding. The Bear River Park Trail, that's an equivalent trail because the trail in the Trails Alliance proposal went through the wetlands. And in the Bear River Park master planning process, it was clarified that we really shouldn't be building a trail in the wetlands. And so instead of having the trail go in the wetlands, it was modified to go around the perimeter of the park. So that is an example of an equivalent trail. That trail is eligible for funding and has requested funding. And then the Trails Alliance proposal had a Whistler area very broadly defined for connections, trails connections in the Whistler area. And so the way that the committee looked at that is we worked with the Public Works Department to identify where in the Whistler area there were missing trail segments that greatly impeded connectivity. And the rationale for that was that, you know, that we were trying to connect tourists to the entire greater, larger community trail system. At the time that that was done, and at the time that the 2A passed, we did not have SDR restrictions. And so there were STRs all over that area. And now they're maybe not as prevalent. However, the Public Works Department has identified 11 separate segments, I want to say 11 segments, that could be built in the Whistler neighborhood and meet the requirements of the Trails Alliance proposal.
So those three, would it count for 4.3 million?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Of the 2.2?
Right.
Now, just to clarify, was, of the remaining funds that are left in the 2A Funds 2.2 that you keep using, do we have to spend any of it?
I would defer to the city attorney.
And what happens if we decide to do it on something else that's-
Not authorized by the ballot question?
Yes.
New ballot question?
So in order, so for example, if you wanted to spend that money on something not part of the Alliance, Trails Alliance original plan, we would go back to the ballot language to what to spend on the 2.2 million dollars.
That's correct.
So we need to limit ourselves to a functional equivalent to use the rest of the funds, whether it's within the city limits or Rabbit Ears or Mad Rabbit, right? So it sounds to me like there's a lot of money that we can spend locally. And I think that by the time, I would be curious to see by September to find out how much money we've spent outside the city limits and how much money we've spent inside the city limits of the original 5.1 million. Because citizens are now not wanting, we're getting a protocol of people emailing not wanting to spend money outside of the city limits. And they don't understand that that ballot was done 10 years ago and that's what the citizens agreed to. So it would have to go back to ballot if we wanted to spend another $2 million doing something different.
Well, and again, correct me if I'm wrong, isn't it, what we're, what are we talking about? Isn't the discussion, if we look at that attachment four, it talks about the, I think that gives us a sense of the, of the trail status, right? In terms of what has already, you know, what's been completed. And so to your question, I think it would be interesting to know, you know, what the cost associated with each one of these is. Some of which, right, are within the community.
Right. And we have that information as a part of the 2A Trails recommendation to council.
Cool.
Okay.
So that, all of that, we have all of that information in terms of what is the, what are all the different trail segments that we believe are feasible and eligible? And what is the dollar amount that that land manager has requested? And we, we have that, we have the trail ranking. And all of that is ready to present to you the next time, when it is scheduled to present to you.
So with the, again, if we look at the, if you look at the bottom of that list, right? Which Blue Sage, Staley Park, Black Mirror, Yampa River, Core Trail, the Legacy Ranch, Core Trail at Fifth, and Hands Crossing, all of those are not being proposed to be funded for various different reasons.
Yeah. And I'm happy to walk you through those reasons. I mean, I, I could sit here and talk forever and explain it, but-
I was just gonna say, we've got, yeah, no, no. Important agenda items, we have a committee that's done this work. Can we allow them to do their work, bring their recommendations to council, and then discuss it at a future date? Just trying to move the meeting along.
Well, I, I agree with you, but, but these aren't going to be part of that discussion, right? If they're not, if they're not recommended, right? So I mean, I think, again, it's just a matter, I certainly hear what you're saying. We've got a long meeting, so just trying to understand the lay of the land here. Other questions?
Yeah, I, I have one question. This is my absolute favorite ballot language from 1986. And the last time that council went through this language, not in connection with the 2A Trails. And we wrote new ballot language. The discussion and the decision was that we would not include within the criteria, promote tourism, enhance the vitality of Steamboat Springs as a premier destination resort. I don't know whether those considerations still remain part of what the Trails Committee is required to consider. So when, when the Trail Committee recommendations come to us, this is really, I think, a question for Dan. Do, are we as council required to include those two criteria still? Even though in, in previous actions, we've said, we don't want to do this anymore?
I, I would say no, that you are not. Because the 2013 ballot language, you know, to the extent that it is not consistent with the 1986 language, it supersedes it. However, this is sort of a legislative history kind of thing. You know, if you are trying to understand or prioritize things within the context of the 2013 ballot language, I think it would be acceptable for you to go back and look at the 1986 language because that was sort of the underlying approval that everyone was operating under. So I think you could consider it if you thought that it helped you reach a decision. But I don't think that you are required to consider it.
Thank you.
How does the ballot language from last year change the 1986 or the 2013?
So it expressly does not change the 2013 ballot language. It mentions that there is a 2013 approval and it won't affect the 2013 approval funds. And then as far as the 1986 language, it effectively repeals that language. So all of the accommodations tax funds, revenues that are collected from the effective date of the most recent ballot question on will be subject to the new language and the old language will not be relevant at all.
And honoring the 2013 2.2?
Yeah, as long as, you know, you just gotta put that, the 2013 funds aside.
Yeah.
You know, those are going to be governed by the 2013 ballot language. But from the 23 language on, that is, that is just the 23 language that you should be looking at.
Okay. So in essence, we, we made that kind of, took the tourism kind of out of the 86, go back to the 2023, and that's kind of where we landed. But this is just one of the last.
Can I ask Winnie just one clarifying question, Winnie? So Michael, the, I think it's 2F. So I was gonna ask that from the 2023. So 2A, we cannot use those dollars for maintenance.
Correct.
2F, so 2A Sunset, 2023, voters voted to approve, pass 2F, similar language, added maintenance. So moving forward, we can include maintenance of trails and property, but 2A dollars, we cannot. Is that right? That was my other question.
Yeah, okay.
I have a quick question.
Thank you.
Right. Yeah, when do we need to spend these dollars by?
You know, there's no bright line rule as to when you need to spend them. And you actually are not required to spend them. You can only spend them on things that are approved by the ballot question. But if you don't like any of those things, you can just choose not to spend the money. You know, at some point, and I'm talking about a matter of years, and maybe five or 10 years, you'd have to start thinking about refunding if you weren't going to spend it, or submitting another question to repurpose it. But, you know, this year, next year, a year after that, you, you don't have to spend these, these funds. You can let them sit and think about it if you want.
Okay, all right. Is there any other comments from council or questions from council before we open it up for public comment? Okay, all right, let's go ahead and open it up for public comment. So anybody in the audience that would like to make a comment, please come down, state your name, your address, and you have three minutes. And if there's anybody online that would like to make a public comment, you know, specific to our agenda item, which is the 2A Trails project, please raise your hand and we will acknowledge you. Is there anybody that would like to make public comment? And we do have, okay, okay. Welcome, John.
John Spezia, 642 Evans Street, and I want to say that I'm a biker. When the original 2A was on task for being voted in 2013, it was mostly promoted as Core Trail, trails inside the city. And that really- And that really sold a lot of people. And I've been on the roundtable for the last, I don't know how many years. And one of the reasons why the roundtable was developed is because all the rest of the users did not design the trails for 2A. It was just a specific group for biking. And so the fishermen and the people on bikes and horses and everything else were really pissed, to be really honest with you. So that's how the roundtable developed. But it was a little late to decide 2A, because the rest of the community didn't have a chance to, to give their information. So that's why we're in this awkward situation. So it's a little bit frustrating here, because we thought the core trail and, and the trails inside the city were, was what it was about. We didn't look at the details, and it's partially our fault for not doing really details, but we thought it was for the whole community, and it really wasn't. So the chamber promotes 100% tourism, and that's what their million dollar budget was for. And also to get more people. And then we have, now today, the city council has asked the chamber to have less money. So they spend 75% of their money to make the impact of too many people in our community bearable. Okay. So times have changed now. So even though the trail was designed to get more people here, we don't want more people here. The Mad Rabbit Trail will generate 1,700 people per day for a three month period. That's more traffic, more carbon footprint, more congestion, and more problems. So what we suggest is we want to use the money for the core trail or part of the core trail and the trails that are inside. That's real important, because time have changed. And with 2F and the city council's direction, we're looking at saving ourselves and protecting ourselves from the impact. That's real important. The other impact is Elk River, Hot Springs, Soda Mountain, Buffalo Pass, Mount Warner, Emerald Mountain, were once great habitat for elk. One places we could hunt. Now you go there, there's all these new bicycle trails, the elk is basically gone. In, in the White River near Vale, 50% of the elk habitat is gone because of industrial tourism. I do not want that to happen here. So in order to respect the cap, reduce miles of vehicle traveled, and respect our community and our environment, we need to put our money into the trails here in town. You can build so many bike trails, you'll never build enough. It's just like, you'll never build enough roads, they'll keep on coming. We need to do a reservation system, so we have a good quality experience, we don't overrun ourselves, and every other aspect of business has a reservation system. So that's what I suggest in order to meet the new demand for my mountain biking, it should be focused on areas we've already destroyed and not spread out to Rabbit Ears Pass, which is an Elk River capping, Elk River capping area. Without the Elk River, Elk, Elk capping there, at, at Ferndale, you're not going to have any more elk. Anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. All right. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to make a comment? All right, come on down.
Hi, my name's Diane Brower, 642 Evans Street. I voted for 2A, and my understanding was it was going to be used for the core trail. And I think there are a lot of other people who were under that same misapprehension, apparently, for whatever reason. I thought it would be used for the core trail and within the city for trails that are needed to help people stay off the roads. I use the core trail a lot, and it's getting more and more crowded. And a lot of that uses from tourists on electric vehicles, I might add. It's getting really congested, it's getting, I would say, kind of dangerous. The money that we have available for trails really needs to be used within the city to get, to let people get around, to let the tourists explore our town in a way other than by motor vehicles. You know, residents, and you know this, you've gotten a lot of letters about it, there's too much tourism. People have been saying this for years. And unfortunately, city policy in the past has kind of lagged behind that desire from the citizenry to back off on tourism. I, I recently spent a little bit of time in Vancouver, British Columbia. The whole time I was there, I used a bicycle to get around. It's incredible what they have done to accommodate bicycles within a dense urban area. They separate bicycles with physical barriers from traffic. You know, you could use money for that sort of thing. But certainly you can use money to build more trails within the city. I think the points that are being made about, you know, you've gotten a lot of input. Citizens want to see that money spent within the city, and I'm really glad to hear that you don't have to spend this money right away. Put it aside, use it for the core trail when those easements are available, when more effort has been put into getting easements. Those, that is a trail that needs to be focused on regardless. That's the way people get around town. People commute that way, people do errands that way. And, and as I say, lots more people are using electric bicycles to do those errands, to get off the roads and, you know, environmentally consciously used something other than, you know, however, however many ton vehicle to, to run an errand. I would just like to say about the Mad Rabbit proposal, if you look at the information, the Department of Natural Resources, the Colorado Parks and Wildlife, did not really endorse that area to be built as dense mountain bike trails. Again, it's a caving area, it's a south facing area, lots of wildlife use that area. I'd say, don't put that money in Mad Rabbit. Thank you.
Thank you, Diane. All right. Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to make a public comment? Okay. Looks like we have a couple of people online. Larry, yeah. Larry, would you like to go ahead and unmute? State your name, and you have three minutes to make a comment.
Yes, thank you. Can you hear me?
We can, thank you.
Great. Well, good evening, everyone. I'm Larry Decher, Denver, 3261 Snowflake Circle in Steamboat Springs. I'm the president of Keep Route Wild, but I'm also speaking as a citizen of Steamboat Springs. And I'm also requesting that you figure out how to target this remaining 2A trail fund towards either expanding the core trail or the core trail and the connectors in our overall urban network. This is ranked as the highest need and desire in both city and county surveys. The, we should consider this trail network not only as an amenity, but an essential component of the city's urban transportation network. And it would serve both residents and visitors alike. And I think you've heard from a lot of the community, of people who thought they voted to, for 2A, thinking they're going to get core, core trail being funded. I've written or spoken to nearly all of you, so I'm not going to belabor these points, but I want to bring up an interesting option for the council. If the council wants flexibility to pursue core trail options or connectors not enumerated within the 2A ballot proposal, such as expansion to the west, you could place a referendum allowing that at the next city election. I am absolutely confident that that proposal would pass handily. Since you're considering a November ballot issue funding Casey's Pond, you could even add it on that with little or no cost, if you decide to go ahead. This is one of the things that you may want to take, take a look at, because maybe now in retrospect, those 2013 trails aren't the highest priority that we have today. In summary, the city has finite resources, and it's up to leaders like yourselves to place those finite resources on the most critical community needs. And that clearly, when it comes to trails from the community perspective, it is expanding the core trail network and its overall connectors, you know, within the city. So that's my comments, and I want to thank you for your consideration and thank you for your service.
Thank you. Thanks, Larry. All right. Lorraine, would you like to unmute? And you have three minutes, three minutes to make a public comment. Please state your name and address.
Sure. Just double checking, you can hear me? I think you can. My name's Lorraine Martin. I live at 26050 Vista Valley Court. I am the executive director of Route County Riders. At this point in time, Route County Riders is over 800 members strong, and we have thousands of supporters beyond that mark. I say that because I want you to know that well beyond the number of purported core trail sort of supporting emails that you've received over the past week plus, I just want you to know that there's a lot of eyes on this council beyond that. A lot of eyes on this council of folks who have been waiting, holding their breath for this progress to occur. I think one of the things that really gets my goat is people who speak up kind of with almost an excitement, a sense of excitement at blocking progress. I'm noticing this sort of common thread between Mad Rabbit and the other big sort of moves we've tried to make throughout this community in recent months. It really worries me. I want to give you a heads up that people emailing you and harping on the core trail at this point in time have been requested to do so through a targeted campaign attacking these trail projects where funding already exists in escrow and is waiting to be allocated. Huge thank you to Gary Suter for acknowledging that the 2A Trails Committee has worked their butts off for years on this project and on allocating funding that has accrued for this purpose. The core trail is being used right now as an excuse to submarine and destroy the funding for multiple use single track trails. People are singing to you, if not the core trail, then also not any of these other completely valid single track trail projects that are in this proposal. The outlandish price per foot of a paved core trail to nowhere, which is what we call a core trail, that would not actually extend very far after spending millions of dollars to pave it, is not what we're going for. The core trail can potentially find other sources of funding to seek, state grant, state grants, et cetera. Route County Riders is in support of all of these initiatives. I want to make one last strong point, and that's that, once these land managers make a decision about whether or not a trail segment can be approved through their planning and wildlife processes, the advocates such as Route County Riders and many others in this community are going to make these trails happen. So if city council eventually turns against funding any of them, you are actually exclusively just serving our jobs harder. It will take longer, it will take years, but we will do it. We will make it happen. Please don't make our jobs harder. We already have tons to do in this community. We are looking to make positive change and introduce people to transformative outdoor experiences, which is already happening on the trails that have been constructed through this project. Please do not derail anything any further, and I look forward to helping educate you on these things over the next coming weeks and months. Thanks so much.
All right. Thank you, Lorraine. Okay. Is there any other public comment, either in the audience or online? All right. If not, we'll go ahead and close down public comment and just bring it back to council for a quick discussion. Any comments?
I don't think I have anything. I think I look forward to more information we get from the 2As committee, 2A committee.
Tachy group today.
Yeah, I mean, I.
I mean, I, go ahead, Dakota.
Go ahead, Dakota.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. I wonder if I just want to speak to some of the public comment regarding funding the core trail, because I've heard that we are funding the core trail, but just not with these dollars that we're really looking to allocate in September.
The Core Trail West, which is from the end of the sidewalk to Brown Ranch, is a part of our, it was funded in the CIP last year. It is one of the highest ranked projects in the CIP. We started that project with accommodations tax dollars, not the 2A, but the regular accommodations tax dollars. We did the design and engineering with accommodations tax dollars, and the accommodations tax dollars were the first dollars in the pot for the construction of that trail. And we've used those dollars to leverage grant dollars as well as a congressional earmark in order to build that. Because of price increases, and I could defer to John on this one, but because of price increases, we are having to come back through the CIP process to request additional funding. And it is, again, a highly ranked project. So I don't, I mean, it's, it's in, it's, it's got accommodations tax, it's got grants, it's got a congressional earmark, and it's in our CIP. It's my expectation that this trail will be built with the dollars currently lined up for it.
What is the timeframe on that currently?
My understanding, John, I'll, I'll defer to John, because he has more up to date knowledge, but we have all the approvals and there's a couple of things that.
John Snyder, Public Works Director. You'll get a full report on this at your August 20th meeting. Right now, we're held up with easement acquisition from some of the property owners, but we're hoping to go under contract and build most of it next summer with the underpass to Brown Ranch the following summer.
All right. Well, I'll, I guess, I guess I'll throw it out here for council consideration. I'm not really willing, I'm not quite ready to throw in the towel on the trail, on the core trail south.
Oh, no. I think we should really look at, I mean, to me, that's a big part of it. The, the people that have the easements on the south of town could have a change of heart very quickly, and we could end up getting that trail going there. So I think it goes past Legacy down through to Bald Eagle Lake and such, and I think that would open up a lot of the south corridor.
Right.
And that's already within the parameters of this. So if, if the city was, whoever's, whoever did the negotiations, it can open up that. I think that, I would like to know if that would be a viable project by August or September, because that would really help us out.
Yeah.
That means engaging conversation with the landowners on easements now. Maybe last year they weren't, maybe this year they will be, but it's definitely something we have to ask. I agree with you.
Yeah. Well, is there a kind of agenda? Because I don't know if that's going to come back to us. I don't think in its current form, that will be something that, unless, am I wrong, Winnie?
In its current form, it is not feasible. And so the 2A committee was told by Parks and Rec staff that in, in its current form, it is not feasible, and thus there was no request for funding for it. Because again, the process is the land manager makes a request for funding, and then the committee looks at those requests and comes up with a recommendation for you. So within that process, the land manager has said, there's, you know, we do not believe the project is feasible at this time, and thus, we are not requesting any funding. And in addition, the knowledge that we have from the first time we tried to look at building this trail is that the cost was well beyond the amount of funding available. And the one easement that we do have for that trail, there's a specific agreement that that cannot be built until the entire trail can be built. And the 2A Trails dollars that remain are not enough to build the entire trail. So it's a, it, that's the longer explanation of why it will not, it is currently not on the list of projects that the committee has reviewed and is forwarding a recommendation on.
Angela, would you like to address, make some, make comments on that?
Good evening, City Council. Angela Cosby, our Parks and Recreation Director. Just a few clarifying points to the comments Winnie made. The, when looking at the core trail south, our agreement on the snow country property does not say the rest of the trail needs to be owned or the city having easements. It's a certain number of feet past the endpoint that there currently is and past the future endpoint. The property owner, when negotiating that, didn't want essentially the trail to end in the middle or at the very end of their property and creating a weird turnaround. They wanted it to at least go and connect a little bit further. Regarding land managers' efforts towards Core Trail South, it essentially hasn't been a priority of the city in the last few years. I'd say, I've been your director six years, and it hasn't been a priority for those six years. So we really haven't invested any energy towards that.
And help me understand, not, no, Angela, probably Winnie. Is it, what's it, land manager is the same thing as the owner?
Yeah, it would, when we look at the city's land managers, it's typically a manager in the Parks and Rec Department that's representing the city, and that helps properly manage.
Context of these trails and the easements we're talking about, is it the owner or is it a land manager or the same?
It's us. It's us. Most of the time, when referring to land manager, it would be a manager within the Parks and Recreation Department, attending these meetings or making decisions on how to treat invasive species.
So, so an owner can't request the funding, it's the land manager? I'm confused, because then a land manager can manage someone's private property?
No, we have, we have the ability for private property owners to also request funding if they want to. if they want to build something on their property. And I've never had even a response.
Okay.
I mean, like my, I, I email people and say, hey, we have this opportunity to fund a trail for the public on your land. Please let me know if you're interested in getting any planning dollars. I've not gotten responses to those emails.
That's where the land manager can say, hey, by the way, we can do this, but the owner's like not interested.
Well, the like typically the core trail south is a very different thing than most of the trails in the Trails Alliance proposal. Most of the trails in the Trails Alliance proposal are on one entity's land. They're on BLM land, they're on city land, they're on city right of way, they're on school district property, whatever it is, it's one entity. The core trail south is a little different because that is um, multiple private properties. Um, and there's no, right, like all of them would have to agree and say, hey, we want to do it and we want to do it in the same way, et cetera. And so that typically takes some outside entity, like the core trail west, to coordinate getting easements, to coordinate saying, hey, we really want to do this, et cetera. And um, that hasn't, that hasn't happened.
Another quite fine question.
But that did not matter.
It's kind of confusing now since we're the land manager in most cases. Is the Forest Service a land manager, the state a land manager, the school district a land manager? Are they land managers or are we land managers?
No, they are.
We need to clarify that because it was confusing.
They're also land managers. So when I say land manager, I mean the school district. Or I mean the city. In some instances, it's the Public Works Department. In other instances, it's the Parks and Rec Department, just depend on who manages what.
But if it's a private property owner from whom we're seeking an easement, then we're the land manager.
If the city is seeking the easement, then yes, we are the ones that are managing that process.
Thank you.
And that's really just the core trail, uh, for the most part.
Yeah, so is there interest, right? I mean.
I, I mean.
In terms of exploring.
Worth investigating. I know it is very expensive. And it's, we could do a lot with that same amount of money to create some bike trails. But I think that as a city council of people's finances here, I would be remiss if we didn't say, let's look at that expensive south core trail that we've been talking about for all these years. One last time, we got this last fund of two point some million dollars. Um, and we clearly, as Dan says, have to spend it on these ballot language. So um, we should look into it. And it may be unfeasible because if we don't have four and a half million dollars to spend it, we may not build it at all. And, and that's fine, but I think that we need, I would like to have that on the um, items that we discuss. It's because we've had so much public support for core trail issues. I would want to make sure we have clear council direction on that.
Yep.
Because I think you need to weigh the whole picture. Core Trail West, it's where all the growth is headed. That's where the public pressure has been. We can't spend the money on, the 2.2 million cannot be spent on the west core trail. I understand that. Uh, but still, um, it is, uh, it's not completely funded yet. And so we just need to weigh that rather than going. I'm just saying you need to get the whole picture, weigh the costs and the benefits and decide where you want to spend the money. And I'm, I'm looking.
Wait a minute. How much is it? How much is the core trail south estimated to cost?
She said 4.3 million dollars.
No, it's a lot more than that, isn't it?
To go from.
Winnie, do we even have an actual number?
From Dougherty Lane to wherever, far more. Yeah. My, my point is, is that I appreciate going through that, but the west core trail, I would be curious to say, this is our last ditch effort to spend $2 million of the 2013 ballot language. Right, of the couple of million that we have, I understand. That, that's all we have. I, in order to spend any of that money on anything else for West Core Trail, we would have to go back to a ballot and ask the citizens to spend a million and a half, $2 million, whatever it is. I'm more concerned and say, listen, within the parameters of the current 2013 scope, the few trails that are left, 2.2 million dollars, let's just keep the conversation focused on that. Because anything outside of that is a waste of time, unless we're willing to put a ballot language on it to spend the money. So to me, this is a lot easier after this work session when we just have a limited amount. Now, what would throw a, a kink into the discussion or a positive in discussion is if the NEPA study came back and said, build as many trails as you want. Then we have 2.2 million dollars to then have a discussion. Do we spend it outside the city limits or do we stay focused on the inside? Those are the discussions by September, I think we need to have to spend that last bit of money. Not today.
Um, chatting with Winnie, the last estimate that was done was eight years ago. Realistically, we're probably looking, and I'm going to give you a very wide range, 10 to 20 million.
So we have $2 million. Why would we consider the core trail south if it's going to cost 10 to 20 million dollars at this point in time?
I have another question to add to that.
Okay.
Why would we trash the hours and hours and hours of work that the two way trails committee has put in?
Agree.
To bring us back its recommendations for how to spend that without even spending any time looking at their recommendations? That's where I'd like to begin.
I agree. We already heard that there are trails within the city limits that are going to come back as recommendations. There's 5.9 million requests, we have 2.2 million. Some of the requests are in the Steamboat Springs um, city limit. So I, I, I think we need to see what the committee's put together.
Yeah, I mean, that's why you guys are there.
Yeah, I mean, I, I mean, I agree. I guess I would just really encourage you all to look at the attachment for, right? I mean, and, and I'd like to understand why, again, I mean, they're ruled out, right? Other than just, I mean, that's, that's where I'm coming from and that's what I was hoping we could have the discussion tonight. But we can wait to have it till September. So, you know, you know, again, from the perspective of um, how we, how the, you know, we're getting and allowing the community to have input.
That's what I would be looking for, hearing from the two way trails committee, having council deliberation, providing staff direction. Safe to assume that the two way trails has been patiently waiting for the NEPA study to be done and socking some of this money away before we spend it to save a little bit for those trails and maybe that's why nothing's been done for two years?
Try five, but yes.
Might, right, a long time.
Might I um, suggest, Gail, that in terms of the information on why certain trails are not feasible at this time, would it be acceptable if I just did a memo to council and didn't take, you know, and, and did it that way? And then if you still felt that it needed to be a public presentation, I could do the presentation. Um, but I would, I would love to try to handle that through a memo.
But I think that's, that's a good place, great place to start, thank you. Okay, any other? Comments, discussion?
Somehow if we can get that memo, that's fine, but make sure that somehow it gets to the public as well. Thank you.
Okay, all right. All right, um, thank you, great discussion. You know, again, really, we do, we do appreciate all your work and it's been a long time. And we know that there's a lot of, you know, um, anxiousness and frustration and um, but you know, it's, it's a process and um, there's a, obviously a lot of need out here and a lot of ideas in terms of how to have the money spent. So um, bear with us for a little bit longer and we'll see where we land. So with that, thank you. And um, at this point, we will close our work session and um, move into our regular, and move into our regular meeting. So again, with that, we will move into our regular meeting number 2024 dash 23. Um, again, just calling to order that meeting and um, and just.
This is the same?
Yep, nope, exactly. Well, I was just going to read my little, my little disclosures here, right? I mean, in terms of reminding people that comments are welcome at the, at um, we do, we are, we do have a public, a regular public comment on the agenda. So we will, um, in terms of the agenda, if anybody's looking for it, it's on the back shelf there. And um, again, we will start out with our roll call, which stays the same. Assuming Julie, you can make that happen. And we, you know, the primary discussion tonight is on Casey's Pond. Um, I guess to the extent that we do have a public comment, just a general public comment session on here, Dan, SC, can we take that first? If there's anybody here that wants to make public comment on something beyond Casey's Pond?
Yes, you can.
Okay, all right, so we'll do that. So we, again, we've got, um, as I say, a regular public comment as well as our agenda item on Casey's Pond. So if there's anybody in the audience that wants to make a public comment on some, on anything other than Casey's Pond, um, you can raise your hand either in, in the audience and or online. Okay, so we aren't seeing anyone wants to make, who wants to make public comment. So with that, we are going to go straight into our first agenda item, which is a Casey's Pond update from Dan.
Thank you. Um, there is a communication form that I sent earlier today. It's in the rainbow packets and I think you all should have received it by email. Um, it, it has a brief summary of uh, how we got to where we are. I'm not going to go over that because we've, I think we all have been following the news. Um, what I'd like to jump in with is that the uh, sort of the community group that's, that's working on a plan to try to um, purchase Casey's Pond is, is still working. Um, we uh, you know, have identified a number of elements of a, of a successful path forward and that would include um, uh, money to purchase um, the facility. Uh, we need a sustainable business plan. We need somebody who's willing to own uh, the property and we need uh, somebody who's willing to operate it. Um, the city obviously doesn't really have any experience in healthcare. And so most of those things are not things that we can really help with. Um, we're being asked to, to contribute some funding to the project. And there are sort of two different ways that that has been discussed. Um, one is for the city to contribute short-term rental tax revenues in some way to support a um, uh, a bid on the uh, the facility and its equipment and so forth. Um, fortunately, the timing was pretty good and then we were in the middle of accepting um, proposals uh, for the use of STR funds. Um, that period for accepting a proposal, proposals ended on Friday at the end of business. Uh, we did receive seven. Um, one of them um, pertains to uh, the acquisition of Casey's Pond and its continued operation as a senior living facility. Um, there's really not anything for you to do right now with respect to that request. It will be reviewed um, by the ad hoc housing advisory committee. Uh, and they are, I believe, scheduling a public hearing or a hearing on the 28th to review those um, those submittals. And then uh, they will come to the council for council's review and recommendation from that committee. So um, I don't think there's really anything to do uh, uh, on the, on the STR front. The other, the other potential piece of the puzzle is there has been discussion about a uh, a ballot question, um, either one imposing a new tax or um, requesting voter approval to borrow money, which is, you know, to issue bonds. And we are still not at the point where we have a proposal that is sufficiently detailed, um, that, that we can identify a role for funding that we could obtain via an election. And the reason for that is the sales process that the receiver is administering right now contemplates final bids and the auction and the sales process ending on October 29. We would not be able to get approval of a ballot question until Election Day on November 5. So um, that date does not fit in very well with the sales process. Um, you know, it's conceivable that maybe we can end up in a bridge funding situation where uh, you know, funds that we obtained through an election could be useful. But at this point, we haven't identified that path forward. So I, I think we're in the position of asking you if you want to keep the option alive. And if there's going to be a ballot question, we have to have a first reading and a second reading, which would be August 20 and September 3 on the council's current schedule. We could do um, we could do August 27 for a first reading and September 3, uh, although that makes the publication interval a little bit tight. So, you know, if you want to keep open the option of maybe moving forward with a ballot question on September 3, we would, we would need to do something on the 20th and 27th. I would need direction from you to bring you an ordinance. Um, we would also, as sort of a, a little administrative requirement, um, need to approve an intergovernmental agreement with Route County so that the county clerk could administer an election. Um, I did have a phone conversation with the county clerk today. And uh, while this is short notice, it does meet the statutory requirements and um, she would be delighted to help us out with an election question if we had one. Um, I spoke to bond counsel today and if there were interest in um, referring a bond question, uh, we could put together the bond question language, uh, but we would need to start that tomorrow. Um, the, and just briefly, the advantage of a bond um, would be we could get funds earlier. You know, if we were to pass a property tax, um, those payments don't start coming in until later next year. Whereas with the bonds, um, it's a two or three month process to get the bonds issued and the proceeds. Um, but that, so that could happen, you know, early in 2025. Uh, and the, also the advantage of a bond is that gives you a, you know, a larger pot of cash than just the um, you know, the semi-annual property tax payments that come in or the, or the monthly or quarterly sales tax payments that come in if you, if you wanted to go that route. Um, so my question for you tonight is, shall I bring you an ordinance? And if so, on, on August 20 or August 27?
I, I, I have an update, if it's all right with you for me to.
Absolutely.
Bring it up. It's, it's a, it's a fast-moving situation. As of this morning, it appears that there is going to be funding available through the community foundation. In a, an amount that is close to, but not exactly the amount that the receiver has indicated might be acceptable, but close enough to make it possible for the first time for us to have a conversation about this. The condition on that will be that the city steps up. No, it is not a parking, it has nothing to do with parking. This would be a buy and hold situation. For some, again, keeping in mind, this is, this is just coming up. I don't know any more details than that, except that it's real. And it will require some city funding or there will be no such accumulation of many millions of dollars. So if we want to, and we can talk more, a little more about this in executive session. I don't, I'm not at liberty to talk a lot more about it. But it would involve the city stepping up now with some STR funds. I'm assuming that none of us is willing to put in the $10 million that was, was proposed as, as a, as STR money. But some STR money combined presumably with a mill levy that would go to ballot and we can talk endlessly about what the language in that mill levy would be, whether it would be specific to Casey's Pond, whether it would be more general about elder care, which as we know is generally not funded in this community, whether it would be cradle to grave, it might be uh, early childhood, childcare, all the way through elder care, could be any of those things. We can talk about them all, but we have to make some decisions tonight or this whole. This is, this is our real chance to do what we said we needed to do. This is our one real chance, but we have to give answers tonight.
Well, it sounds to me that with the, I'm for our process. We have the ad hoc housing committee, the, someone has put an application in from, to help, you know, Casey's Pond in that. I don't know what that application is, I'd like to let them through that process. Um, I think tonight's agenda item is really to talk about the, the urgency that we have, this is for a ballot language. Um, and I'll just go on record saying, I am not comfortable putting one on specifically for Casey's Pond. Um, I am 100% um, supportive of having something regarding uh, elder care and even cradle to grave, because I think that if we had one mill property tax on the entire city of Steamboat Springs to go just to elder care would go an immense way with the Casey's Pond, you know, challenge and issue and crisis going on. But this would allow future councils to be able to have a funding bucket specifically for this. You'll get my support on that. I don't know if you'll get my support on specifically a, a property tax for Casey's Pond. So it would depend on how he drafts that up and the discussion we have.
I may just direct us back, for anybody that is in the audience, we did, um, if you want to look at uh, what our attorney wrote up in terms of kind of Casey's Pond update, it's the pink in the back. And I think, Dan, you also included um, the STR conversation we had during, or the briefing that you gave us in terms of the STR money. had during, or the briefing that you gave us in terms of the STR money from our last hearing, our last council meeting. And so, and I guess I just use that as reference in terms of, to the extent that you're saying there is a request for STR money. What's that for?
To buy it?
I mean, is it to buy it? Is it, is it workforce housing?
It would, I will defer to Dan on this, but we've talked a lot about it. It would have to be in terms of workforce housing. As we all know, there are 15 units in what used to be the memory care unit at Casey's Pond, which, which is now essentially employee housing for the traveling nurses because it has been impossible to recruit and keep nurses without providing that. So it would be workforce housing and that would be what the STR dollars would go to.
Okay, thanks. That's what, that's a clarification I needed. And can you talk a little bit more, I guess, about the bond, the potential for the bond?
In, in what context? What would you like me to address?
How it works. Walk me through that again.
Okay, so a bond allows you basically to use tax funds before they're actually collected.
Right. Okay.
You borrow a hundred dollars from somebody, you issue a bond, they pay a hundred dollars for it, and you agree you're going to pay them back over the next 10 years, one dollar a year from, you know, whatever revenue source. So it allows you to, you know, to borrow money and against the revenues of some tax or-
Right, the mill levy.
Or a fee or, you know, whatever kind of funding source that you have. So it allows you to have a pot of money to spend now rather than have to save over a period of years.
Okay. And you think that would be available potentially the beginning of 2025?
Right. It depends a little bit on whether it's a private placement or a public placement. And please don't ask me what that means because I don't know. But two to three months before proceeds would be available. And that would be two to three months starting after voter approval because voter, a bond is borrowing money and we have to have voter approval to borrow money. And there are alternatives. You are familiar. We issue certificates of participation sometimes. That is an alternate way to finance things. It doesn't require voter approval. It, it does require that you have a public facility that is not encumbered. And we don't really have one right now. We will in a few months when City Hall is complete. But I don't, I don't know what that does to the timing. I think that probably a bond would be quicker.
Okay, you have a question?
If we're talking about something on the ballot, would we have language? Maybe it's just too detailed, but this is stuff I'm thinking about. Will it sunset?
I think probably what would happen is I would bring you vanilla for the first reading and we would have a long conversation about what you wanted it to say.
But any direction you could give tonight would be helpful.
I'm very concerned about every day that goes by, Casey's Pond has diminished in terms of our ability to save it. I'm well aware that we need to step up if these donors are going to step up. If the city doesn't step up, then the donors won't. But we don't have any time at all. So another way to look at this is to say that we have the ability, we have over, Kim, 20-plus million dollars in the STR fund. This money is, you know, we have the ad hoc committee working on spending some of that money, which, to be honest, is the lucky strike extra for us at this point in time. I would like to think we could be more aggressive here and talk about how we can take the initiative and take a sum of money that is going to be significant enough, that is going to have the desired effect of getting the donors to step up and to put in the money that we know is out there. And I think we got to move fast. I don't think we have time to wait for the end of August for the ad hoc committee to do their work. I don't think we have time necessarily around the mill levy piece and what happens if, if it goes down. If we really want to save Casey's Pond, we have the wherewithal to significantly influence a, a group of people in the community to step up, but they won't step up without us. And I just think that we should think outside the box a little bit and is there a way that we can short-circuit this thing? Because we, we're out of time.
Which is frustrating because that's, I get it. Can you turn your light? Like, I am being blinded by your, yeah, or like turn the, I'm trying to look at you and yeah, like the glare. Thank you. I get it. Like, and I'm right there behind the families and my friends and that are in Casey's Pond. We didn't create the situations. I, and I also get the urgency. I'm real concerned about using STR funds outside of what the voters voted for and why it was passed. And I think Dan's kind of cautioned us about using it any other way. I also have, if, if we put something on the ballot, I want to be able to say, I support it 100%, not from just my heart, because I care deeply about this community, but also because we have done our fiduciary responsibility. And I've heard the financial situation is because they have not been making their interest and their principal payments. Coming from a nonprofit financial background, I need more, I need more than that. If I'm going to tell people, vote for this, how do we know this is actually going to work financially? There are, you know, there are, I would love to see, so 990s are what all nonprofits have to submit to the Fed, the federal government. All nonprofits should be doing independent financial audits every single year. I'm sure Casey's Pond has done that. I've only been able to find one. That's where you gather the information on, is a problem really the interest and the principal. But what other liabilities would they have if that was wiped away? Someone's going to buy it. That will then put liability on Casey's Pond. Like, that's not going away completely. And so that's, that's where I'm coming from. I just, I wish I had more financial information about the financial sustainability.
Let me, let me respond to what you're saying. I'm not suggesting that we use STR funds-
Yeah.
-in a manner that the voters didn't vote on. If, if we can't do that, we can't do that. But if we can do that, then I would be, just the thought of being more aggressive as to whether or not we really want to save Casey's Pond. I've seen some, some financials on Casey's Pond, Capella and has been very, I think, pretty above board in what they've been telling us since they took over. The place is making its payments on a, on a cash flow basis. It's the interest and everything else that is impossible to deal with at, at this point in time. But it's like anything else. If you lose three or four patients a week, you know, who leave out of skilled care, you know, then that changes the whole projection. And so my point is not to delude ourselves into thinking that if we take a few weeks here, or we take a month, or we take this, that, you know, we're going to buy ourselves enough time. And so I'm just trying to think about, well, yes, it has to make sense. It has to be legal. It has to be, you know, within what was intended. So anyway.
Yeah, no, thanks, Steve.
If, if we're, if we're struggling with the absolute lack of information, as I said, this is, this is all that I am, A, authorized and be comfortable in, in saying in public. If you want to go into executive session, there's not a whole lot more, but there's some more. And if you're really struggling with this tonight and we have to make the decision tonight, it might be worth a try.
I, I, go ahead, Gary. You're going to speak.
I was going to tag on to Counselor Muntin's concept. I, and Counselor Dixon's concern, I understand both positions. I lean toward the sense of urgency and I hearken back to the receiver's letter that said, you have entities with a wherewithal, but nobody stepped up. And that's a significant statement. We have the, the wherewithal with STR funds. I would not recommend reserves. I would recommend STR funds. If we go that direction and, and we need some legal guidance on this, it would have to be earmarked specifically to the ballot language and use language such as affordable and attainable housing. So if we put up a number and I just throw out a couple million, I don't think, I, I couldn't in good conscience recommend 10 million and whack in 50% of that fund when we have so many other needs out there, including Brown Ranch in the not-too-distant future, hopefully. But a couple million, 2 million or 2 and 1/2 million, that's something substantive that I think would catch the attention of a potential philanthropist or a potential donor and, and something that wouldn't necessarily take a significant part of the STR fund. I mean, we're looking at having a 20-plus million dollar balance at end of year 2024. So, yeah, so that's, that's the direction I'm leaning. And I would suggest we bifurcate this conversation into two questions. One is the use of the STR tax and then the other's the ballot question, because I think it's easy to get them both convoluted. And we should probably take those on one at a time.
I, I agree with, with Gary. We, I've been accused of joking about Casey's Pond. This is not a joke. We, we play fun with numbers. What is a number that is going to work given, what is a number that's going to work in terms of the city demonstrating seriousness to charitable donors that are out there? And 2 and 1/2 million is the number that I came up with also. So it turns out we were, we were both thinking along the same lines. I think that's a realistic place to start. And knowing what I know about the funds that presumably will be available, that would also make it possible to put a much more viable offer in front of the receiver and do that in the next few days, which is what we really need to do if we're going to, Steve, as you say, stop the outflow of residents, particularly from the DOKE.
And my question, next questions would be, what does it take to do that? I'm certain it would be a supplemental appropriation that would need to be approved by City Council through the, the formal process. I don't know what would be required in order to convince a potential donor of our commitment, if that would be an emergency resolution and kind of looking for Dan or, or others that might be able to give us an idea as to what mechanism that would be to create some commitment for those funds.
The charter does permit the City Council to make appropriations by emergency ordinance.
Okay. That's, that's significant.
Okay, all right. I think unless there's more conversation to be had, I mean, we did, we do have a, an executive session on the agenda and it sounds like, well, and we, you know, see if there's interest in terms of council going into an executive session. I do believe that we probably have some people in the audience that may want to make public comment as well. And I know we have, have at least a couple of hands online. So is it, would, what's the preference? I think we should make, take public comment now before the executive session?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, exactly. All right. So if you'd like to make public comment, please come on down, state your name and your address. And you have three minutes.
Hi, thank you. I met you last week. Thank you for all your work and your concern. You've been adding this to the agenda. My name is Deana Fisher. You met my mom and my brother last week and I live at 3426 Flagstone Court. And a couple things to note, the City of Steamboat Springs elected a home rule government and the Charter of the Citizens of Steamboat Springs selected home rule as the type of government for their city and elected 21-member commission. The Charter provides that all powers of the city shall be vested in an elective council which shall enact local legislation and determine policies. And per your own tax policy that I have found and read, you have broken up the role of city government into different areas related to your taxation. And I would argue a couple points. One is you don't need to go to the ballot language. I agree with Mr. Muntin, time is of the essence. We have to look and act, we're looking to you as the city leaders and not because you created this problem. But there's a lot of misinformation out there. First of all, it's not business. It's not a for-profit entity. Second, there's always been a hospital district within the tax code of Steamboat Springs since the 70s or 80s. Mill levy portions from the Route County Mill Levy has supported hospital district. So what's broken here is we're again looking at Casey's Pond as one entity. And really what the community needs to hear is that the nonprofit Yampa Valley Medical Hospital was allowed to hand over a nonprofit nursing home that it had and took responsibility for and was partially funded by government all of these years. It's nothing new. We're asking you to do, that the nursing home was part of the continuum of care as our healthcare system in Steamboat Springs. So first, it's not a new funding ask. It's really that this community has been robbed and thieved of its nursing home, a place for our residents to age with dignity and a place to die, which we will all need. None of us are getting out of here alive, to be clear. So I would like to tell you that you have the authority and I don't know if, I know I don't have the authority to tell you this, but I think that I'm hoping your mind will discover the truth that you're the city government and you have the right to use general funds. And for instance, you have a public welfare line item, Horizons, which supports our developmentally disabled adults. In 2011, 1.15 million goes to funding. In 2023, 2.1 million. I ask you, please fund our disabled and elderly adults, not just the developmentally disabled.
Thanks, Deana.
Thank you, Deana. Okay. Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to make a comment?
Good evening. My name's Anders Anderson. I live at Sleepy Bear 3725 Lincoln. That, the urgency is there. I, the DOKE is, that ad hoc, I have a lot of questions that I'm, quite frankly, confused about. Of course, legality is not my field. But the ad hoc committee, I understand through other emails and such that they are in touch with the Attorney General and the Senator. Those, I think the most important part is to try to get that DOKE relocation stopped or slowed. I totally think that if too many of those folks get out of there, it, it will be over. And that scares me to death. My sister is in the Grove. She's in the place she needs to be. She loves it there. And it's the care she needs. She cannot be in a regular home with appliances and, you know, just a regular place. The urgency, I think, is, and I'm just asking, asking that you move on that if this is a possibility with the Community Foundation and the other entities involved, that we can get that stopped and save Casey's is what it is. This asset to the community that has so many other aspects to it that a lot of people don't understand, that, you know, just Casey's, the old folks' home is, is not where that's at. And I- And I totally agree with Deana that, you know, we're the next ones. So I want this asset to stay in town. Thanks for listening.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Let's go ahead and go online. It looks like Bill. Do you want to unmute, state your name and your address? And you have three minutes.
Hi, can you hear me?
Sure.
Hi. Bill Jamison Burgess Creek wrote, "I agree the time is of the essence. It's time to move on this. How you move is up to you. And if the number is 2 and 1/2 million, that number can easily come out of your unrestricted reserves, if necessary. If you can't find it, the means to arrive at that number through use of STR funds in a timely manner, you can certainly find a way to use unrestricted reserves." So it may not be the city manager's preference, but it is an option that you certainly have. And it's time you do something and that time is tonight. You can go into executive session, figure out what the number is. If it's 2 and 1/2 million, you decide in your wisdom how you're going to come up with it. And if STR isn't a viable option, then you have unrestricted reserves. So I urge you to move. It's time to get off the proverbial pot and let's get this thing done. Thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
All right. Thank you, Bill. Okay. Candace, would you like to unmute, state your name, your address? And you have three minutes.
Hi, thank you. Candace Banister, 40411 Anchorway. I don't need to explain the importance of Casey's Pond. I'm sure you're all aware. I've had young and older friends go in and out of Casey's Pond over the last 30 years that I've been a resident. It was extended care for a 37-year-old friend who was suffering from cancer, all the way up through many, many people that I've worked with throughout the years. And it is just an absolutely irreplaceable asset. While I think the general community doesn't understand the full reasoning behind how the situation arose in this way to where everything was mismanaged, we do know the situation that we're in now and time is of the essence. I'm not shocked that there are some donors that have come forward to possibly be able to save Casey's Pond. And I'm also relieved and not surprised that they're looking for city investment. We all know that this is not a normal situation, nor is this anything that you want to set a precedence for in a fiscal or process way. But with the multitude of services that are provided for our older residents, our younger residents with terminal conditions, with the role that it plays as far as extended care in the hospital if you've had a surgery or something like that, and all of the voices that have come to talk to you about their particular family members who need to stay there, this is something that's really going to require city leadership. And I agree with everyone else that's spoken. It's going to require city leadership tonight. There's a million reasons that got us to this point, but this will be the legacy, I think, of this council. It actually, if you look at the rest of your agenda items, everything like trails or historic preservation or anything that we're discussing as a community really is secondary. If we don't have a place for the ill, the vulnerable, the elderly, to be able to safely age, get the care that they need and as Deana spoke of earlier, eventually die. And it's something, an absolute essential service. Is it something you should have to step in on? No, it's not really fair and it's astounding, actually, that we are where we are. But we are where we are. And so I really look to this council and to this leadership to act on this as soon as possible. And I appreciate Steve Muntin's comments about time is of the essence, especially if there are donors waiting in the wings. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Candace. All right. We'll move on to Catherine.
Okay. Hi, can you hear me? My name is Catherine Carson. I live at 307 Locust Court with my husband and cat. I'm involved in various organizations. But here I am tonight speaking on behalf of myself and of course, my cat. So first of all, I want to thank Candace for speaking so eloquently on the need for Casey's Pond. And I want to thank council and Gary and Dan and Steve and Joella for taking the leadership on this, on trying to protect the most vulnerable of our community. And also I want to thank the group at the Community Foundation and all the groups and the very brilliant people who are working on a path forward. And that's what I'd like to ask council tonight to do, is to keep moving on the path forward. We need to keep all options open. So the group of individuals who are working on saving and protecting the very most vulnerable members of our community. And when I'm talking about the most vulnerable, I'm talking about the people in skilled nursing who are on Medicaid. And those are people who were our workers, who were the folks that have supported our community throughout the decades that now need us to step up and support them. And I appreciate you guys finding a way to look at the path forward. So two things. I agree with Gary. There's two things we need to be looking at. First, the city needs to step, needs to come to step up. We need to, you know, get over, look, instead of looking back at how frustrating the previous management was, look to the future, seize this moment and find a way to move forward. The STR taxes are there. My question to Dan is, is there any possibility that the STR ballot language on new affordable housing, if it goes to, if it guarantees a certain number of beds in perpetuity for Medicaid, if that would qualify, that is definitely affordable housing? And I think it's new if it's guaranteed. So I think that might be an option. And I also agree with Bill and the other commenters that we need to find a way to use that nice 2 and 1/2 million dollars or that that's the number to show the community commitment and give the philanthropic leaders in our community a chance to get that done. So I applaud that. Any sort of, any sort of community health, whether it's healthcare like Denver Health, behavioral or senior health, needs community subsidies. So I encourage council to find a way to invest that. I agree with Counselor Muntin. Separate that from the ad hoc committee. Let those guys do their great work on workforce housing. This is different because it's an emergency for the most vulnerable healthcare and housing of our community. Second, the property tax, the mill levy. Absolutely. Is this the best idea and are the preference to do a rush mill levy? No. But if that's a path forward to get Casey's across the finish line, you know, Dan is brilliant at this. Give him a chance to work with this team and come up with a possible mill levy that will work if needed. I mean, maybe if you come up the short-term rental tax, the philanthropic folks will come through. It might not be, but it might be needed. So my request is to keep that path forward. Direct Dan to come back with a, you know, with a vanilla generic mill levy. We've got three whole weeks to work with this group to come up with the number that's needed. Amy, to your question, absolutely. You need to look at the financials of it. You can't do that in public. I'm not usually encouraging council to go to exec session. But in this case, you need to because you're talking about buying, you know, property, very confidential information. But take a look at it with your, with your experience. I think you'll be comfortable. I'm pretty confident you will. Michael, I love the idea of broadening this out to elder care. The question is really going to be, if council moves forward with a mill levy, what amount will be palatable to the community with a very quick request? And whether that pencils out? So my request to you guys, you are a creative council. This will define your council, that you're going to save our community for skilled levies, for skilled nursing. We have time. If you decide not to move forward, I hope you do at a later date. But tonight, please, you know, give direction to staff to continue moving forward so we have the opportunity. That's what it is. So you guys can get this done. Our community, when we're, when we need to rally together, we do. So please invest the STR tax, move forward on the STR or on the mill levy and give the group working to get this done. Thank you very much and I believe in you guys. You can do it.
Thank you, Catherine. Okay. Looks like we have one more public comment online. Rob, if you'd like to unmute and state your name and your address. Well, you have three minutes.
Sorry, there is something. Hi, I'm Rob Rage, 2155 Bear Drive. I'm vice chair of the Yampa Valley Community Foundation and a, the son of a resident at Casey's Independent Living in Casey's Pond by my 93-year-old mother. Amy, you had asked a question about the liability or potential liability involved in the event that Casey's Pond is acquired. My understanding is there is no liability. Once Casey's Pond is acquired from the bondholders and goes out of receivership, any liabilities that are currently on the books are wiped out. So for example, UC Health has a $3.5 million subordinated debt note on the books with Casey's Pond. That is gone when it is concluded, including the interest that they have accrued over a period of time. So the objective here is buying out the bondholders. So we really need to bifurcate, I believe, the financing side of things versus the legal side. The legal side is what ends up stopping or slowing down the process with the receivers. So there are ongoing discussions with a variety of parties to see what can take place to help out the current residents of Casey's Pond, and that includes the DOKE. That will take some amount of time, I anticipate, but it is ongoing right now. On the financing side, it will take a village and the village includes the city. So anything that can be done, I recognize you all have the sense of urgency as to what's transpiring and hope that you'll do the right thing when you go into your executive session tonight. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Rob. Kathy Meyer, would you like to unmute, state your name and your address? And you have three minutes.
Hi, Kathy Meyer, 28 Valley View Court. I think it was interesting that tonight you talked about the community survey. And one of the things you, that was listed was affordability of not just housing, but quality healthcare. And I think our citizens moved here because we are really special and lucky to have a facility or facilities that can take care of people. And we are the center for Northwest Colorado. And I would just like to say that we need to protect Casey's Pond because it's integral to our whole ecosystem of healthcare. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Kathy.
We may have another comment.
Would you like to make a comment?
Yeah, my name is Susanna Noel and I live at The Pines in Steamboat. And I've been here about seven years and I absolutely love Steamboat. But I cannot imagine a quality town like this. It doesn't even thinks of not having a nursing home. Every town has a gas station, grocery stores, fire stations. And you have to have a nursing home in this town. My son is only 55 and he's going to be in Casey's Ponds for the rest of his life. And hopefully Casey Ponds is still there because I can't drive anywhere else to go see him. It's only 10 minutes to get to him now. And they do a wonderful, wonderful job taking care of him. And I've never been so depressed in my life after I heard that they might be closing. And all I can do is pray and I've been asking all the churches to pray for this too. Somehow you guys are going to pull it through and we're going to have Casey's Ponds here in this wonderful town for the rest of our lives. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Okay. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to make a public comment? Or anyone else online that would like to make a public comment? All right. I'm not seeing anyone, so we'll close public comment. And I guess I probably, I need to make a disclosure. I think most, I don't know, most of you know, my mom has been looking at retirement communities and just disclosing that we, you know, have been looking at Casey's Pond and had made a deposit that has been returned. So again, just FYI, if anybody has any concern with me being involved in this conversation, please let me know.
Bill, we are all looking at Casey's Pond and thinking about our futures. So I cannot imagine that as a conflict of interest unless everybody on council recuses themselves.
Okay. Perfect. I just wanted to make sure everybody, everybody knows that. Okay. All right. So with that then, let's.
Are we going to executive session?
Yes.
Just make one comment because I think people will probably clear the room.
Okay.
Well, two things. One, I, my combining healthcare and the financial aspect, please, no, it's not coming from a place of not caring. That is just my job for 20-some years and having those uncomfortable conversations around healthcare and finance. And so that's where it's coming from. And second, where the heck is UC Health in this conversation? I'm not talking about Yampa Valley Medical Center. I am talking about UC Health. Are they at the table? Can you answer that? Sorry, I'm looking at the people, but that's ridiculous.
The only thing that I can tell you today, which is what I knew four days ago, no updates on it, is that Senator Bennett was going to reach up to the highest level of UC Health. I don't have an update on that, so I can't tell you. It needed to go to that level.
And yes, they are at the table.
So I'm not going to call them out. I'm going to call them into the conversation. It's ridiculous.
Right.
Sorry.
Really think we need to go into executive session.
Okay. I was just going to say exactly that. So everybody will call, will go into executive session. But again, if there's anybody that wants to, on council wants to make a comment in case nobody's here when we come back, please feel free. I don't know, Dakota, if you, I think you're still with us. All right. So with that, we are going to go into an executive session to discuss Casey's Pond. The specific citations to the provision or provisions of CRS 24-6-402, subsection 4, that authorizes the city council to meet in an executive session are set out below. The description of the topics are intended to identify the particular matter to be discussed in as much detail as possible without compromising the purpose for which the executive session is authorized. CRS 24-6-402, 4B. Conferences with an attorney for the local public body for the purposes of receiving legal advice on specific legal questions. Mere presence or participation of an attorney and an executive session of the local public body is not sufficient to satisfy the requirements of this section, subsection 4. So with that, I would entertain a motion to move into executive session.
Move to go into executive session.
Second.
All right. So we have a motion by Counselor West. We have a second by Counselor Muntin. Any discussion? All those in favor of going into an executive session, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay. All right. That passes 6-0. Okay. We will go into executive session and then we will come back.
But it's not on record yet. There we go.
Oh, okay. The time is now 9:46 and the executive session has been concluded. The participants in the executive session were Gail Gary.
Steve Muntain.
Michael Pacino.
Dan Foot.
Gary Suter.
Amy Dixon.
Joella West.
Kim Weber.
Tom Leeson.
Rebecca Bessie.
And Brad Calvert.
And Dakota McGinley.
And you know what? And it's Dakota. And Dakota McGinley.
I'm back. I'm here.
Okay. Great. Welcome back. Thank you. For the record, if any person who participated in the executive session believes that any substantial discussion of any matters not included in the motion to go into the executive session occurred during the executive session or that any improper action occurred during the executive session in violation of the open meetings law, I would ask that you state your concerns for the record. All right. I am not seeing anyone raising any sort of objection. So with that, we will move back into our, move back into kind of the regular meeting for continued discussion of our agenda item on Casey's pond.
Well, I'm prepared to make a motion unless there's discussion that needs to precede it.
Um, I think, yeah, I was gonna say, Council, yeah, Council McGinley, did you have some comments that you wanted to make or questions that you wanted to ask regarding further discussion on Casey's pond?
Yeah, I do have a couple of questions. Um, so I'm curious if anybody knows why the DOKE is closing sooner than the rest, like why residents are being told to leave.
Uh, it has been explained to me that that part of the facility loses a lot of money and that the other two neighborhoods operated at profit.
They also, they also have to be given, if I recall correctly, it's 90 days notice. I don't believe that applies to the other neighborhoods, but that's specific to the DOKE and in particular because that's where the Medicaid patients are living.
Okay. Thank you. Um, the county, what's the county's involvement at this time?
The county has declined to participate.
Okay. Any idea why or just decline?
Gary, would you like to? Gary, would you like to add any details?
I had talked with the county manager and gave him a heads up that they may be asked to participate in a countywide tax issue because I knew we were going to be talking about a tax issue this evening, assumed we would. And, uh, and he basically responded, I wanted to give him a heads up so he wasn't blindsided and he, and he basically responded and said, uh, if we do that, you could plan on considerable pushback with the transition economy, looking at west route, uh, the west route geographic area and the transition economy and, uh, as well as a significant debt with the Hayden School District. So, um, he said he could probably count on significant pushback. So I'm not aware of any discussions that the county commissioners have had about that, but that's the information that I have to date.
Okay. Um, I had a really brief conversation with Sonia Macy's and she said that they talked about it today at some point and, um, yeah, she said that if they were to be involved, they would need a formal request with a lot more information. So I don't know if that's something that we want to put some thought into. Um, but that's one, one concern I think I have is that I feel like this is not only a city issue, but also a county issue.
That was, that's what I had pitched. I said, there's countywide benefit to the county residents and that's why I, I brought it up. My response to that is if we go down that road, you're probably looking at at least a couple of week delay by the time we come up with a formal request. We'd have to figure out what we're requesting of them. We'd have draft correspondents. They'd have to put it on an agenda. They'd have to discuss it. They'd have to get public input. They'd have to act on it. I don't think we have the time to do all that.
Commissioner Redman at our meeting the other day told me that his emails was running six to one against any support.
Sorry, re- repeat that?
Commissioner Redman, uh, when we were talking about, uh, supporting Casey's Pond, said that he, his emails were running six to one against any support.
There you go. We've patched together some information.
Okay. Um, sorry, go ahead.
I, I was just going to throw back to you because I thought you had an additional issue that you wanted to talk about that had apparently been raised about conflicts.
Right. Yeah. Um, I've been asked to ask my fellow council members to disclose of any potential conflict.
That's, that's really bizarre.
Yeah, it is. I don't know. I mean.
Well, as I, you know, I mentioned before we went into the executive session that, um, I do have an elderly mother and we have been looking at numerous different retirement communities, including Casey's Pond, and we did have, uh, had submitted a deposit for an assist or for an independent living unit and it was returned. The deposit was returned when all of this started to happen.
Well, I, I think we dealt with that before we went into executive session. It was disclosed. Nobody on this council thought that you should recuse yourself. That's been dealt with.
Is there any more specificity, Dakota, that you can bring to this?
No, just, yes, I guess there, there was a person who was concerned about any financial involvement in Casey's Pond. And I personally believe that if, if you were either of you, any of you, you would have disclosed already. Um, but I'm just following up on a constituent concern.
Much appreciated, but usually conflicts have a way with their increase in revenue. I don't think anyone so far is seeing that this makes money. That's why we're in this problem.
I just, I'm, I'm trying to understand. I've disclosed over and over and over that I spent seven years going in and out of there as a volunteer. Under no circumstances can I spin that as, as a conflict of interest. But there it is again, in case anybody else feels that it is.
No, I, I, I mean, I could share that I did strategy work with Casey's Pond twelve years ago. Dakota, would it, would it help to clarify that, um, if there is a successful bid to purchase the property, uh, the money will not go to, um, Casey's Pond or the corporation that owns Casey's Pond. The money will go to the bondholders who loaned, the loaned money to construct the facility. Um, the shareholders or the owners of the current Casey's Pond are not going to receive any money. They, whatever interest they had is lost through this receivership process. It's similar to a bankruptcy.
Okay. Yeah. I mean, I, I don't have an issue. Um, I, I hope that information is helpful for anybody in the community who might have a concern, but, um, thank you all for entertaining that for a moment. Um.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, and I would just say, if, I mean, anybody has a, you know, if anybody has a concern, I mean, please bring it forward and, uh, you know, we, we would, you know, welcome the opportunity to, you know, either explore and or answer or follow up on it.
Just that saying, I think maybe there's a conflict of interest is, is not helpful for addressing the problem. It would have to come with, I think there's a conflict because, and if, if that's filled in, we're happy to deal with it.
Sounds like this is a situation where someone that constituent that asked maybe doesn't fully understand what the definition of conflict of interest is. So I think it was probably more of a maybe not understanding. Yes. Maybe seeing it.
Yeah. And I think it's, it's a mute point, you know, I think it's a, um, we've spent, we've spent a good amount of time on that. So thank you. Um, and I, I just want to add finally, the, the final point is, um, I can support some short-term rental funding going to Casey's Pond. Um, I do have some concerns about a mill levy. Um, just in the sense that this is, this is pretty rushed and, and I would love if we could come up with a, a scenario that, um, you know, is a little bit more broad and can have, you know, be applied to childcare or be applied to something else, um, in the event that we are, you know, needing additional funds for something, um, like childcare. Like I think, I, I don't remember whose idea that was initially, but I think that's a great idea. So I'm looking forward to our next discussion where we can look at options and make a final decision. Uh, but I just want to express concern that I do see the, the value in this. I also see that, um, with the short-term rental funds, it seems as though we can potentially meet the need right now. Not entirely. It's not all on us, but, um, I don't know if I see the, the need for a mill levy. I, I mean, uh, there's always a need for more funding, especially with healthcare and the Medicaid issue, but, um, maybe it's just a little unclear for me what that need really looks like and how much. And, um, so, you know, when we have more information at our next meeting, hopefully I will be a little bit less concerned about that.
Well, you raise a good point about what is the size of the mill levy. And, uh, I don't think we're in position to address that.
Hmm. Well, that's, that's, somebody i- is going to be able to, to fill in, if it, if it's this percent, it will generate this much. But before we do that, I think we should go back to what we agreed to not discuss in executive session, but to bring it out to, to the public, which is, do, do we believe beyond the Casey's Pond emergency that there is a, a gap in our funding of elder care in general? And do we also believe that there is a gap in our funding of childcare? And would it be reasonable to put forward a mill levy that would say this is intended to cover both of these types of care? And I'm tap dancing through it because I don't have words. That's why we direct our city attorney to bring us back the words that actually work. But that's the, that's, that's the concept. Is this, is this mill levy for a much broader purpose? Or is it strictly for Casey's Pond? I would think that would be the first question we'd ask ourselves.
Be on record saying that it was, needs to be broader. Um, and, and you'll get my support. Um, I think that giving the direction to the city attorney to draft up something for our next meeting to be on this year's ballot language for a cradle to grave type healthcare, um, is very prudent in use of our citizens and tax dollars at this point. And I think that would go a long way to shore up future of healthcare, senior and, and infant care in the future. And so you, I definitely would like to support that with having him draft something up for ballot language this year.
Hmm. Yeah. I mean, I certainly think from our discussions on the C dot, um, childcare property, we know that there's an operational deficit.
About somewhere between two hundred and five hundred thousand dollars a year.
So I would, I would be more in support of a broad, you know, directing Dan to bring forth language, right? That would be, you know, broader and address both of those needs.
I, yes, I just, I worry about next year if we're going to go again to the voters for RTA or, you know, other, um, revenue streams. Um, but I get the urgency. Um, I know there's a need for sure. Um, I would also advocate for it to have a sunset.
Really?
Yep.
I don't know. I'd do that.
I would.
I mean, we did that with the afford, with the Yamp Valley Housing Authority and with one mill, they have parlayed that into some amazing housing in our town. We would not have the housing authority now without that one mill levy. It is going to sunset in, uh, twenty-seven. And, you know, they positioned themselves better, but I don't know if I would put a ten-year sunset on that, but we can have that discussion as we get the first reading and go through it. I would love to have that debate and talk about it because I think I could be convinced, but, uh, something like healthcare going into perpetuity is something we need to, um, not take away in ten years. And what would happen if we would have to go back to the voters and do it again? So it's a conversation we can have later.
If it works, voters will vote for it again.
They will vote for it again.
Now, we have this, to be honest, this is because of Casey's Pond. We would not be having this conversation tonight if it wasn't for Casey's Pond. We would not have anything on the ballot in November if it wasn't for Casey's Pond. That's where, and I, um, open also to listen to not having a sunset, but that's, you know, where I'm at right now.
I would just raise the, um, as we look out into the future, the healthcare system is going to become more broken, not less broken as we.
Trust me, I'm.
So I'm, I'm okay if you want to do something like that, but not a very short time horizon on it.
Yeah, yeah.
Pretty long one.
The, 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 the need for both of these, both of these things, they're not things, but you know what I mean, will, will continue indefinitely. As far as, as far as we're all able to see, we can all dream about when the federal government, uh, completely changes its position on both of these things. But we, that's, it's, I'd love to hope for that, but I don't even hope for that. And we need to deal with people who are living here now, little tiny kids and old people. I don't know how many of you have had, but I'm sure you have too, have had people my age come up to me and say, I, I don't, I don't have any security in this town. People who are not living in Casey's Pond have been saying, I don't know, I don't have any security in this town. I'm old. I can't work anymore. I don't, I don't know how to manage. So if we're able to put something this broad onto a ballot and actually turn it over to the voters and say, what do you want to do? And if they say yes, we're going a long way toward dealing with figuring out how to provide adequate childcare and figuring out how to provide adequate senior care.
So how do we determine, because I don't, I want to make sure Dan has the right kind of direction. How do we determine what the right number is in the next, what, week or two? How much time do we have? Um.
It's going to be a fill in the blank exercise.
I have a, I'll have a suggestion, but go ahead and finish, Dakota.
I mean, I'm, I'm open to suggestions, but I do, I do know that our community likes to have information. They like to have data. And if we don't have data and we're just kind of throwing numbers out there, it might be a tough battle for some, um, to support.
So here's, uh, I'm kind of preaching to the choir here, uh, based upon the comments I've heard so thus far. Since the nineteen nineties, there's been more of a shift toward municipalities, uh, providing social services and human services. And it's been happening for, actually since the late eighties. Um, more and more cities, uh, have, uh, dedicated funding, just as we do, uh, to our HRC, uh, for human services. Uh, more and more cities are subsidizing childcare. We were subsidizing childcare in the early nineties, uh, in Snowmass Village in Aspen. Uh, more and more cities have passed sin taxes, uh, that are dedicated toward mental health. Uh, I think Eagle County passed a countywide, uh, tax. I can't, I'm not sure what type of tax dedicated toward mental health. Uh, more and more cities are providing social services to the homeless and the developmentally disabled. So it's been a trend that's been happening for a long time. You heard the public testimony about what kind of community are we? Uh, what's the message that we want to send? What's the legacy that we want to leave? And, uh, and I think putting this out there, uh, as, uh, as a potential, uh, mill levy question would, would, uh, forward that, that question to the community and they'd obviously get to weigh in on it. I also believe that, uh, those bookends, I love the, the term cradle to grave. You saw in the survey tonight, the importance of the lack of childcare. It was a high, high priority for lack of childcare. So getting those bookends in this community and saying, hey, we're going to take care of the childcare deficit, which is going to be anywhere from two hundred to a half million. Uh, we're not sure yet, but, um, a mill levy would take care of that for the long term. Uh, I'm going back to the million dollar a year loss that we heard, uh, in the original letter from the receiver. And I'm going, okay, well, um, one bill generates about one point three million, one and a half mills would, uh, generate close to two million or around two million. That would cover, uh, a deficit for skilled nursing, uh, and hopefully in perpetuity, might go up. You're right. I think it's going to get worse, Steve, before it gets better. And, uh, and that would leave, you know, a couple hundred and half a million to, um, to fund deficit for childcare in perpetuity as well. So it really provides bookends, uh, for this community and, uh, we could submit that to the electorate. So I'd say between one and two mills, and I think that's something that's digestible. So there you go.
Okay. Is there any further discussion?
I'd just comment that. So the person who's in healthcare, I'm not advocating against this. I actually really quite support it. So I, but I'm the person who always has had to ask these types of questions. Um, and I just want to make sure what we present to the community gets passed. And so that's right. Like that's also where I ask these questions. Um, that I want to make sure what we put forward has the best chance of being approved by the voters. So that's really where I'm coming from, but I, I support it.
We, we have two things going for us. One is the, is the, the need at the cradle and the need at the grave. So I don't think we have to describe that to anybody. But the other thing we have going for us is that Dan is going to draft a, a wonderful ballot.
It's going to be poetic.
All hours.
Poetic. Well, the other thing that helps me out is just that we're going to have a nice, robust conversation in the next couple of weeks with our, the citizens and the electorate right now.
Right.
Um, and so the first reading will help define, so everyone can read the packet, know what's going on, come to the meeting, help us work through it. And I would hope that this community does come out in public with the urgency of where we're talking about and shows up and helps us guide what that ballot language would be. and shows up and helps us guide what that ballot language would be. Because I, I lean on our citizens to not just email, but actually show up and actually, you know, be part of this conversation. And I think that we'll, we'll see what the next couple of readings end up with. And let's just hope as a, as a community, we'll talk through this over the next two or three weeks.
All right, any comment? Go ahead, Dakota.
Yeah, I, I also want to just add as a final comment for myself, that if there is the smallest amount of time, a few weeks, that maybe reaching out to the county could be beneficial. We're, we're up against the clock here and we're finding ways to come together and put our heads together and make a decision. And I feel like they can do the same. Because who knows if there's going to be the right amount of partnership or feels like we could benefit from as much partnership as possible in this scenario. That's all.
All right, thank you. Would someone like, are we ready to entertain a motion? Okay.
So I, I will make the first motion and that is to direct our city attorney to come back to us within 24 hours of now with a draft emergency ordinance relating to the allocation of 2.5 million dollars of STR funds for affordable housing specific to Casey's Pond.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Counselor West and a second by Counselor Machino. And I guess maybe, I guess my, a friendly, do we want that to be, did we say attainable housing or affordable housing?
Sorry, if I said affordable, that was my error. Attainable was what I meant.
So you'll entertain a friendly, a friendly motion? Okay, all right. So we.
Is this meeting something we're going to adjourn and reconvene? Or do we adjourn the meeting completely and start a new one?
You are. You are, yeah. It's interesting, what's the terminology? I guess it's really not adjournment. I think you're just continuing this meeting until whatever time you choose tomorrow.
Okay.
Plan is to reconvene at noon tomorrow or something with a Zoom call to approve this ordinance tomorrow.
Right. Yeah, I think we, we need to do the inevitable task here of trying to schedule a meeting for tomorrow. I understand that there may be a meeting that's already, that, a Zoom meeting that will already be handled at 11:00. And maybe, do we want to make the second motion as well? Dan? Do we want to make the second motion as well in terms of the?
Oh, direction? I got that already.
Okay, no, are the, are we going to, were we, do we need on the mill levy?
Consider them one at a time.
Yeah, okay, all right, okay. Well, we're continuing it, right? So.
We have to approve that motion now to have Dan? So yes, you would vote on the motion to tell me to prepare an ordinance for consideration tomorrow.
Okay.
You would continue the meeting. I, I don't need any further direction on the, the mill levy ordinance.
Okay, all right, so we'll take, we'll take.
You can continue this meeting at the end. After our business is done, then you can make a motion to continue this meeting to a date time certain.
Okay.
Vote on the motion.
But we need to vote on the motion.
Right.
Exactly. All right. So is there any discussion of them, any further discussion on the motion? Okay, all right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? All right, so that passes 6-0. All right.
And then now you would move to continue.
We don't want the mill levy?
Is it, are we doing it at noon?
No, I'm, well, and I thought we needed a motion on the mill levy.
Want to do the mill levy next?
I, I don't need.
No, I'm sorry, no, I mean the STR money, sorry.
Who's talking?
We just.
No, 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 we didn't do the STR money.
Yeah, that's what we just did.
2.5?
2.5 STR. For Dan to draft a ordinance, an ordinance for a mill.
No, we're doing two different things.
An emergency ordinance for a supplemental appropriation of 2.5.
Yes, exactly.
The STR funds for attainable housing.
That's, that's what we just did. But Dan has just said he doesn't need a motion relating to the mill levy, right?
Yeah, I can, the direction I've gotten so far is.
Okay, okay, all right, okay, okay. So now we just need to set, sorry, I thought we needed to, I thought we needed to do two different motions.
No, I, I, I think you just need to do a motion now to continue this hearing.
Okay, okay.
Time to put that ordinance together.
Okay.
It would be.
So do we need to be specific or can we just make a motion to continue this meeting until a specified time tomorrow? Yeah, I think a specified time would be good.
So one, either 2 o'clock or 11 o'clock.
11 o'clock?
We may need Rebecca to come to the upfront to tell us what is already scheduled.
11 o'clock or anything before noon works for me.
I can do 11.
We have another meeting.
We do have a Historic Preservation Commission scheduled at 11 o'clock tomorrow that will be both here in person and on Zoom, managed by our communications folks. So I, probably 11 to at least noon, I think we should hold for that meeting.
About 10:30.
Well, does that give Dan enough time?
That gives me enough time. Is a half an hour long enough for you to, to entertain the ordinance that I? There may be public comment?
10 o'clock.
10 o'clock is fine.
10 o'clock or, or, or noon, or, or 12:30 to, to dodge the.
Oda only has to.
Oh, that's right.
Just do 10 o'clock.
Yeah.
That work for you, Dan?
10 o'clock.
Can everybody do 10?
Can everybody, yeah, everybody can do 10 o'clock?
Yes.
Okay, all right, okay.
Motion to continue the city council meeting till 10 o'clock tomorrow morning. Second.
All right, so we have a motion by Counselor Monteen, we have a second by Counselor Machino. Is there any further discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that motion passes 6-0.
And we, is this?
Are we intending to do it on Zoom?
Are we going to do it on Zoom or, or will somebody be here if we decide just to come, come here? Or should we just all do it on Zoom?
I gotta do it all Zoom.
I'll come here.
Okay, so we'll do, we can.
I'll come here.
Okay, right, yeah.
So true.
All right, all right, so it will be a hype, so we'll have a hybrid, we'll have a hybrid meeting. We'll have, we'll be here at 10:00 and there will also be a Zoom link. Okay.
So with, with a continued meeting, procedurally, what happens is that, do we, do we have to fulfill all of the requirements in terms of public comment, all of those things?
Yeah, in my mind, this is the functional equivalence of taking a 10-minute break.
Right.
So we don't have to post anything. No.
No, that's why we're doing the, just like.
And you're basically done.
So we do not need to adjourn.
Okay, all right, okay.
We aren't adjourning.
We aren't adjourning, we'll just, we'll see everybody 10 o'clock in the morning.
We vote for that.
Say that, Counselor McGinley?
I said, I'll see y'all tomorrow.
See you tomorrow. Thank you, friend.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dakota.
Yes, you will. 10 o'clock.